With that, I will follow the meeting to order. First thing is a roll call, please.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Mr. Bradley.
Present.
Romania.
Present.
Mr. Kim.
Present.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Rather.
Present.
Thank you for that, for the forum. With that, the first item of business is the approval of minutes from the last meeting of March thirteenth. David sent out. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of minutes.
Well, then we approve the minute from March fourteen, was it fourteenth or thirteen?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderwoman Clark covered, seconded by Jake Bantus. Call for vote.
Paul Louie Clark.
Hi.
Banton.
Hi.
Mr. Boaz. Mr. Boaz. Mr. Bradley.
Hi.
Romania.
Start. Sorry, this is Commissioner Boaz. I'm sorry, I had technical difficulties. I.
Romania.
Hi.
Mr. Kim.
Hi.
Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. Rather.
Hi.
Mr. Boaz.
Thank you. With that, we have three action items today. One of them require, both two of, all of them require a public hearing. So as the commission knows, we'll take the presentation. At that point, we'll then have the, oh, we closed the public hearing, then I'll entertain questions from the commissioners following that. If you're here for a public hearing, I would request that you see Michelle to my left to sign up or register who you are and what organization you're representing for that public hearing of that particular item. If you're online, we'd ask that you please identify yourself via the chat. And at the appropriate time, I'll be, I'll be informed of those that are online to make statements and we'll entertain them at that. With that, as I mentioned, three pub, uh, three items. Uh, we do have the rezoning petition, a sloop amendment, and a zoning text amendment. Uh, Marion's going to make the first presentation, so we'll go ahead and let Marion do that.
Great. Well, good evening, um, Chair and members of the commission. I'll be presenting this first item, which is the, uh, submittal of a rezoning, by a petitioner for the nine thirty Sydney Street address, and that's City Block eight forty-seven. So here is an overview. It's one parcel, uh, just over a quarter of an acre in the Sular neighborhood. The petitioner is Aaron Spurgeon, and he's also being represented by, uh, his architect, Mr. Joseph Klitzing, uh, who's here with us tonight. And the application request is to rezone from K unrestricted district to D multiple family dwelling district. Next slide. So here's a little bit of the context around the site. You can see the, the site itself, uh, highlighted in pink there. It is right across the street from, uh, Big Daddy's Bar and Grill, um, which is right on Sydney at that same corner. And on the block just south of Jean Slay's Girls and Boys Club of St. Louis, kind of across the street from the recreation fields of, uh, that institution. It's at the, oh, if you go back for just a second, it's at the very northwest corner of this kind of, um, expanse or, uh, several blocks of surface parking that has historically served the AB InBev headquarters, um, which you can see is south of the subject site and then the brewery and broader Anheuser-Busch complex to the west of AB InBev HQ. This is all west of Seventh, which turns into Broadway, which is kind of the, the primary, um, hinge, if you will, between the Sular neighborhood and the industrial part of Sular and Koshusko neighborhood to the east. Next slide. Here is a picture of the building itself. It's the, um, I'll, I'll call it blonde brick building, um, at that corner. It's the very northwest part of the corner of the block. And the petitioner seeks to renovate the existing structure and convert it, uh, this kind of a former warehouse building, but convert it to apartment units. And I believe the, the latest plan, I'm, I'm aware of had fourteen units envisioned for the project. And you can see Big Daddy's there just across the street and that red brick building, uh, the three-story there. Next slide. So, uh, in the, uh, petition to rezone, here is a summary of what would change in terms of the land use. So it's currently zoned K, which is our unrestricted district. Uh, in a way, you can describe that as sort of the most intensive district. It is, uh, permissive of a wide range of uses. Um, and as you can see here, any purpose that does not conflict with a nuisance ordinance, uh, but with a list of exceptions, one of the major ones is that no residential uses are allowed in K. It also allows for significant height if certain setbacks are provided. If the site were rezoned to D multiple family, that would be allowing of a broad range of residential uses. Single family, two-family, also multi, multiple family, as is proposed, and others. And also the D district conditionally allows for a collection of neighborhood-serving commercial uses. So I kind of have a sample here, bakeries, art galleries, drugstores. Then the height in D is generally three stories or I believe forty-five feet. Uh, so you can see the, the subject parcel here outlined with that thick black outline, um, on this block that is zone K. But south of the block to the north, which is zone D, and then the corner where Big Daddy's is across the street is zoned F neighborhood commercial district, which is kind of one of our commercial or largely mixed-use districts, allowing for a similar height, three stories or forty-five feet. Next slide. So in our current strategic land use plan, this location is designated business and industrial preservation area, which is typically not supportive or allowing of residential development. In this case, however, staff is recommending the use of the adjacency rule to, uh, kind of be supportive of or allowing of the, uh, proposed zoning. And the neighborhood preservation area, which you can see is the block to the west, and also a portion of the block to the north, is our sloop designation that supports, um, kind of the renov- renovation and preservation, and also sensitive infill of residential uses and corner commercial uses. And the recommendation here for use of the adjacency rule is related to, um, kind of acknowledging this conflict, this context of, um, kind of immediately surrounding mixed uses, residential uses down the block to the west, um, and a mix of uses to the north. So, uh, you know, we would find the use of this adjacency rule to be, um, kind of in keeping with the context here. And sort of acknowledging that this building is kind of of its own kind on this broader block that generally has a different use, which is surface parking. Next slide. So just a quick tour of the site to give you a little bit more of a sense. Um, here's the, a view of the building again. Next slide. Um, view of the building in relationship to the building across the street, you can kind of see the brewery there in the distants. Next slide. Um, you can see here, we're looking east down Sydney from generally the, the subject site. Next slide. You're looking west, and here's where you can see a little bit more of this building as part of a sort of continuous, uh, context of, um, kind of a mix of uses, including residential on the block to the west, and then also that mixed-use building where Big Daddy's is on the ground floor right across the street. You can see the recreation fields and Jean Slay's Girls and Boys Club, uh, kind of on the north side of the street or the right of this image. Next slide. And so, um, with that, I want to, actually before recognizing the petitioner or his representative here, I want to pause and ask if, um, zoning administrator Mary Hart Burton has any further comments or kind of things to add to what I shared.
Thank you, Miriam. And no, I have nothing new to add.
Um, and so with that, I believe we have both, uh, Mr. Spurgeon and also, um, Mr. Klitzing, his architect, here to share, uh, kind of any remarks they would like to about their petition for this site or their, their plans for the location.
Welcome.
Uh, please, when you step to the mic, please use your outside voice. Identify your name for recording purposes and who you're with.
Okay, my name is Aaron Spurgeon. I'm the petitioner. I'm with, uh, uh, LLC associated with this project. Um, I have a handful of properties in this neighborhood already. I have right around seventy units inside of Sular already, and then another thirty within like Benton Park, Maplewood area. Um, but, uh, I guess this is my first time doing this. Is there any specific type of feedback or questions you guys all have or direction you want me to go with?
Uh, there will be questions. There may, there may be. There may be questions from the board at a, at a moment. We'll answer at that point, but if there's nothing. Okay, city, city, we're gonna have to do better. Uh, at that point, we'll ask you to step forward then and they, if there are questions like that.
Okay, I mean, she has it pretty much summed up. I would say, um, the only, uh, I mean, Joe, is there anything that I need to add, Joe? I mean, the only thing I would say is, uh, for the site. To me? Uh, was the parking situation, but essentially, um, I've spent a lot of time combing through Anheuser-Busch and, because it's right next to that, and, uh, found somebody I could speak with, and, uh, I'm actually in negotiation with purchasing the lot behind it, which would leave any concern there. But other than that, I mean, she summed it up pretty well. Our goal is to, uh, convert it. It was once a bronze shop. It was built in nineteen forty-five, and it's been operating for the same shop purpose since nineteen forty-five, and hoping to, you know, be allowed to convert it into fourteen loft-style apartments down in Sular, so.
Thank you. With that, uh, the first thing I'll do is entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Comment.
It's been moved by your second.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Garmedia, seconded by, by Alderwoman Clark covered. Call for vote.
Paul Louie Clark. Mr. Clark.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Boaz.
Hi.
Bradley.
Hi.
Mr. Garmedia.
Hi.
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 With that, the public hearing is currently open. If, is there anyone that is listed to speak online? Let's go. The one online, Michelle, anyone listed to speak online? Public hearing call number one. Public hearing call number two. Public hearing call number three. With that, and no statements or, or conversation from public hearing, I'll entertain, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, previous roll.
It's been, it's been moved by Commissioner Banton, seconded by, uh, Commissioner Ray Young. Call for previous roll. Hearing any objections? Hearing no objections. Previous roll is closed. With that, now at this point, I'll entertain questions, uh, from the commission. As I know, I know simply by the list, Alderman Cone and then Alderwoman Clark covered. Alderman Cone, any questions if he's online? Hearing that is not online with that Alderwoman Clark covered, any questions?
Of course, I'm gonna, well, thank you first for being here this evening. Of course, I'm gonna ask the question if you've already been in conversation with the Alderperson, Alderwoman Spencer and the neighborhood organizations there around the, the property.
Yeah, so, uh, Alderwoman Spencer, she, uh, is fully aware, hasn't provided much of a dialogue just yet with it. Um, I think she was waiting for me to do the other steps kind of first, uh, but the neighborhood has been there. Uh, they seem to be very, very excited about it. Most of them live kind of in that area and walk by it with their dog. They were saying things like that. Uh, claim they're writing a, uh, letter of recommendation for the project. So as far as that goes, yes, I have done that. It seems like everybody's so far on, on, uh, on board with it, so.
And I, I'm sorry if I missed it in the packet, but are they, are these for sale or are they leased?
They're leased.
They're leased. Okay. All right. I might have another question, but thank you so much.
I'm so glad to hear that. Commissioner Banton.
Hi, thanks for being with us here tonight. I, uh, I remember seeing in our packet, I believe it was a letter from the, uh, owner-operator of Big Daddy's saying they supported the project with the condition that, uh, parking be provided for the number of units. So can you maybe elaborate a little bit more in terms of negotiating for the, the parking lot and exactly, is that the one that literally surrounds the building that you're in negotiation for?
Um, yes and no. I, I prefer for this specific project, if you were to look, um, at the aerial view of this.
Yeah.
It should just draw the straight back down, I guess, south essentially. That's that little portion that's in line with the existing paint.
Buildings.
Yeah, I think it's seven spots. Um, it's already has a curb cut there, which isn't great. I don't have to mess with any of that. Um, Anheuser-Busch is checking with me, uh, this week, they're checking to see if they can, um, I think most of these lots around here have two entrances and exit points. And if I did this, it would bring it down to one. Should would be, I'll just provide them with another curb cut in a different location on that lot. Uh, but that would be huge for the project. I mean, the hope was with the neighborhood group at least too, um, that it's less dense over there. That parking, if you looked at the pictures that were presented, it's very, you know, open. Uh, there is not really any traffic unless it's going to be a Mardi Gras-type event, uh, maybe or a Friday night or Saturday night outside of Big Daddy's. But, um, parking as is, it's pretty, pretty prominent, but, uh, if I can secure this, which all signs are pointing as a go, I think, from all the conversations I've had with that Anheuser-Busch parking lot, that would make this project even much better, I think. So I should have really a solid answer by that, I think, next Friday.
Okay. Um, we are in a unique position of having someone on the commission that actually works in that area. I would ask Chair Strathaird, is there, in terms of street parking in that area, is it usually, if, if you were not to be able to secure the parking, what, what's the street parking in that area like on a day-to-day?
Historically, during the day, eight to five, um, eleven street is occupied because you have both the club and school. Uh, on the Sydney side is generally lunchtime during the business hours. Uh, I couldn't tell you about the evening hours at all.
Don't have to work overtime. It's a good thing. Okay, I, I guess I'm a, I'm a little concerned. It sounds promising. I don't have any issues with the project. I think it's a great project. Love staying, seeing the reuse of, of existing buildings like this. Um, the, the whole parking lot thing with it being fourteen units?
Fourteen.
Um, that is a little above what I would say I would be comfortable with, with no, you know, no dedicated parking.
As of right now, in the current plans, without there being, uh, I know it's not a time, but without the addition of that parking lot, we do have three off-street parking spots, um, and then a bike, bike rack. But, uh, as of right now in the current plans, it is three, uh, off-street spots.
So is my, I guess my last question, is there a certain timeline you're trying to hit with this? Obviously, you know, time is money, but if this were to be pushed, to be reconsidered at our meeting next month, and you say this parking lot thing could be figured out by then, would that be unacceptable?
Um.
Thing for you?
I'd be fully honest, and I don't need any sympathy from it. Just give you the full, uh, order of what's happened so far. So whenever I went to purchase this property, there was another, um, uh, party vying for it as well, and they were just gonna use it as a warehouse, right? What it, what it was. So that, that offer was more attractive to the seller due to the fact that I would have to do this, okay? Um, I intend said like, I, I love Sular. It's my favorite neighborhood. That's why I invest so much there. And I said, well, I'm gonna do my best to, to put my foot forward and do this. So I've been putting down every month non-refundable earnest money to go through this process. So pretty committed at this point. Um, closing is set as of right now, uh, for the end of April. I have a document I got to sign this week that I put down more money to spend it one more month. And I, closing May thirty-first on the project, um, and I don't know if that answers your question, but I'm closing May thirty-first, and I'm very committed at this point, but, uh, that's all I can tell you at this point. I don't, I don't know how long this process takes, which is why I've been doing these monthly addendums, adding on to the earnest money, so.
Got it. So that, that answers.
And let me, let me back up to your question. Keep in mind, it is a characteristic of Sular, not that one.
Yeah.
Other than a couple of, you know, a few of the residential apartments, it is, it's known that you have street parking. So.
Most of my apartments in Sular, I think I only have maybe two or three buildings that actually have off-street parking. Those are usually like, even if it's a four-family, there's two spots, maybe, you know, like that. It's off-street, so.
So even if you weren't to get, weren't able to get the lot, you would still move forward with the project?
I, I wouldn't, I mean, that's up to you guys, I think, but I think, uh, I would be very comfortable without causing any kind of issues for anybody.
Okay.
I wouldn't have any, I wouldn't have any, uh, regret with doing it, no.
Got it. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Banton. Uh, Commissioner Boaz, then followed by Commissioner Bradley.
No additional questions.
Bishop Bradley.
Just real quick, um, what are you planning on doing to the outside of that building? I'm pretty familiar with it architecturally, and are you proposing any sustainable items, uh, to the building? If so, just an idea of what you're thinking about doing there.
Sure. Um, so exterior-wise, it's, it kind of sticks out in Sular because it's not brick, it's block, right? Um, so the, yeah, there we go. So it's a big block building right now. And our intent is, uh, which I think all these plans have been shared with, um, you know, cultural and everything, as, as I've met with them already and things like that. But our intent is to essentially lower some of the windows and add some above to make them more uniform with the historic, you know, like, look, uh, as well as, building's very narrow. And originally, when we looked at this, the idea was have a, a five-foot, six-foot interior hallway, but that six feet is very crucial to the unit space. So I thought, okay, why don't we do exterior entry, um, to also keep it in line with Sular look and type? So basically, we're going to be adding some windows to make it more, you know, stacked and uniform across the entirety of the building. And then the, we're going to be doing exterior entry, uh, on the east and the west side of the property.
Mentioned this in my presentation, Mr. Bradley, but, um, this location is within the Sular local historic district boundaries. So kind of as Mr. Spurgeon alluded to, the, uh, the, the exterior renovation will be reviewed by the cultural resources office. It sounds like that dialogue has already begun.
Great. Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Garmedia.
Thanks so much. Uh, from our perspective in the president's office, we're kind of no parking minimum, so we'll support this project whether or not you get the parking. Um, the question I have is just, could you characterize a little bit more about the units, like, is it studios?
Sure. Uh, as it sits, now, this is what we hope to do, okay? Uh, there are, well, let me, I'll explain this first, I guess. So there are eight one-bed, one-bath, and six three-bed, two-bath apartments.
Say it again.
Six three-bedroom, two-bathroom apartments.
Three-bedroom.
Yes, that's where I was gonna go on that question. People think that's weird. But all these new developments in Sular, um, you know, Ice House, Steel Yard, Soho, fourteen-hundred Russell, all these places, they have only studio ones and twos. I actually have probably twelve three-bedrooms in my portfolio down in Sular, and those are always the most in demand. They're always the first to go. That's usually the, the tenant base down there, you know, three people getting out of college, wanting to move to Sular. Housing's very expensive right now, so you can cut it up three ways. So there's a big need, I think, in Sular for three bedrooms, um, with new apartments at least. Uh, a lot of times you'll find some houses or some older apartments, somebody turned into a three-bed, but it's a closet, like an oversized closet, and they rent it out as a bedroom. So this would be three true, three-bedroom, or six true three-bedroom, two-bath apartments. They're around thousand fifty square feet, like that eleven hundred something. I think they're about ten fifty, eleven. Joe will confirm, though. Thousand forty-four. So pretty good-sized apartment units for, uh, Sular at least. So.
Okay, um, yeah, that's great. Uh, we're, you know, adding more three-bedroom units to the housing portfolios. Um, yeah, I had some other questions about like the exterior, because it looked narrow, uh, but yeah.
So it's fifty feet wide, so the unit's gonna be twenty-five feet, you know, width.
Great. Um, I think that was my only question. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, before, Ms. Andy, I noticed Mary put her hand up, so I don't know, Chair, if you wanted to see if she had a comment.
Thank you. Uh, hold your comment for me, Mary. I want to finish with commissioners.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I had no, I think his only question was the N, so thank you for having him.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
No questions. Thank you.
Uh, okay, uh, Chair, couple, couple of quick questions. What's your anticipated construction cost, rehab cost of this?
Uh, just the construction?
Well, your, your total project cost.
I hope. I got a number I hope for, but, uh, realistically, probably one point nine to two million dollars.
And your anticipated square foot cost?
I don't have.
How many units do you know?
I didn't let him broken down that far. I just looked at the, you know, because there's exterior, I have to do the math on it. I mean, I can do the math real quick.
All right. Hello, that.
Hundred and forty thousand a unit.
Yeah. Say it again?
Hundred and forty-two thousand roughly, if it's at two million.
All right. Uh, I have no more questions with that. Uh, let me recognize, uh, Mary Burton online. Mary, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. I was just gonna comment about the parking since I too live very near this project and walk past it every day when I walk my dog. So along Sydney, um, his project sits at Sydney and Tenth Street, and, um, the parking on Sydney is usually more full the farther west that you move on Sydney, up towards the cat's meow and the front door of this Girls and Boys Club. But moving east along Sydney, from just about where their building is all the way to Seventh Street, rarely are both sides of that street parked on. Just my two cents about what kind of parking's available on the street there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. With that, uh, we've had all the questions asked. We've got the, the ready for the next one.
I will ask.
It's written on the.
Did you feel that right? Because I was like, I guess I could wait, but I mean, since the, the parking and everything has come up several times, but I know that, um, to Commissioner Garmedia's point, and I know that some of the TOD, intentional TOD development that's happening in the wards that I represent in, what is the footprint for public transit around there? Do you know of, or if not?
I know that Seventh Street has some stops I see people sitting at, um, other than, I'm not.
Twelfth Street had, Twelfth Street had stops as a bus route on it. Sydney does not have a bus route on it that I'm aware of.
I don't believe so. I think Seventh Street, though, if you go down.
It's Seventh.
I think Seventh Street, if you make that north on, you know, seventh, go head north on Seventh, there'll be a couple little bus stops up and down Seventh Street.
Seventy, seventy-three route.
It's kind of in a, a position that's near the highways, fifty-five and stuff, so it's kind of off the main strip a little bit.
Were you gonna be going for any, applying for any incentives or with this project?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. With that, then, I would have, uh, Miriam come back to the podium, um, and submit the, or review the recommendation from the staff at this point. But we move to the next slide.
Our, our finding is that this request is in conformity with the sloop, with the use of the adjacency rule, as I described, and we recommend approval, uh, of the request or recommendation to the Board of Aldermen.
Right. With that, I would entertain a motion either way.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved to approve by Commissioner Banton, seconded by Commissioner, uh, Young. Call for vote.
Hi.
Hi.
Boaz.
Hi.
Mr. Bradley.
Hi.
Mr. Garmedia.
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Boaz.
Thank you very much. Aaron, thank you for your presentation. We wish you, hope things work out for you, especially since you're putting down monthly earnest money. Non-refundable earnest money on that. Uh, with that, the second item looks like Scott's gonna be making the presentation.
Yep. And while we do the transition, I just want to acknowledge the commission's frustration with the mics. I have just reached out back to our, the manager of the room to request again that somebody help us out, because this has been a persistent issue, and I, I apologize.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, I'm Scott Ogilvy with Planning and Urban Design Agency Program Manager. I'm going to, uh, discuss, uh, Strategic Land Use Plan Amendment number twenty-six. We are, of course, working with our current strategic land use plan, and as you all are very well briefed on, um, Miriam managing, uh, an update to the whole sloop. Uh, but this would be Amendment number twenty-six to the existing Strategic Land Use Plan. Um, there will be a public hearing here. Um, I think we can. I think we can.
Sorry, waving to customers behind you.
Um, do a presentation, then we'll have a public hearing, um, and question and answer slide. Um, as you know, the Strategic Land Use Plan was first adopted in two thousand and five. It has had these incremental updates uh many times over the uh last nineteen years. Um, typically, uh, a sloop amendment involves changing um the land use designation for a parcel or a block or a series of blocks on the map, um, either in anticipation of an action by the planning commission, completion of development, um, incremental projects that have occurred over time. In this case, we are not changing any of those parcel or block land use designations. We are recommending changing um just the route for the North Side, South Side MetroLink project, which is depicted on the Strategic Land Use Plan map. Slide. Um, so not a full uh North Side, South Side um MetroLink project update, although I think we could do that um in the not too distant future. Uh, but the, the context here is that during um the last couple of years, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, uh, Bi-State Metro Transit and the city of St. Louis partnered um to assess the route and the alignment of that plan, North Side, South Side project. Um, the result of that assessment changed the alignment in the middle section of the project. So the twenty eighteen alignment, which is currently depicted on the sloop, um, goes downtown uh via Shoto, Fourteenth Street. There's a north-south couplet on Ninth and Tenth downtown. Um, goes back north on Fourteenth and then goes west to via Delmar. And then there's a couple of route options um going northwest of there. The assessment done over the last couple of years resulted in a straighter alignment for a number of reasons, but the alignment at the south end um is the same. It starts at Chipewa Broadway and Jefferson. That intersection travels north on Jefferson, stays on Jefferson and stays on Parnell where uh Parnell or Jefferson essentially changes names. Um, then reaches Natural Bridge, heads west for a short stretch on Natural Bridge, and the northernmost station would be at Grand and Natural Bridge at Bridge at the southeast corner of Fairgrounds Park. Um, so as that work uh wrapped up, um, towards the end of twenty twenty-three, um, East West Gateway took that on and reviewed it. Their staff made a recommendation to the East West Gateway Board of Directors. The East West Gateway Board of Directors adopted this new, what is called LPA or Locally Preferred Alignment for the project. They did that um at their February twenty-eighth meeting of this year. So if we adopt this change, it aligns um the East West Gateway Route Alignment for the project with our local land use uh planning map and allows us to pursue other planning, other supportive, um, excuse me, other transit supportive policy initiatives. But uh, here are a couple renderings at this scale. Maybe you won't get too much out of it, but um the, the higher image or the upper image is at Cherokee and Jefferson, and the image on the bottom is at Grand and Natural Bridge. Um, next slide. So this is the current Strategic Land Use Plan map. Um, this reflects the, the twenty eighteen alignment, which was previously adopted by East West Gateway. Um, you'll notice that the alignment does extend um northwest and south past this initial project. Um, nothing we are doing today changes those routes, so those potential future phases will remain the same on the map as options, although at the moment they're not really in active project development. Um, and slide. So this amendment would um would change that current active project section um from Chipewa and Jefferson up to Natural Bridge and Grand Avenue. Um, I'd mentioned this last month, I believe, but the project uh also got a new name after that East West Gateway action, so we are calling it the MetroLink Green Line Project. I've been slowly retiring North Side, South Side from my vocabulary. Uh, so I think after this meeting, when we've presumably updated it on our Strategic Land Use Plan map, uh, we will, we will stick with MetroLink Green Line uh going forward. Um, and with that, Mr. Chair?
All right, uh, with that, this also requires a public hearing. Please forgive me, my sinus is if you're looking at what you understand. If you're registered or please, if you're here for the public hearing, please sign up with Michelle on my left or online, and I'll call it at the appropriate time. Call for approval to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved by Commissioner Garmendia, second uh by Commissioner Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Previous role?
Previous role. Call, hearing objections? Hearing no objections. The public hearing is open. Michelle, do you have any listings?
Mr. Chair, I just want to note, I know there are several people online who want to speak on the zoning uh text amendment that is up um after the next agenda item. So just want to clarify that if they're here to speak on zoning, it's, it's the next item rather than this Strategic Land Use Plan.
So this is the east, this is the MetroLink Green Line Project Conversation. Is there anyone online identified that they want to speak for that? Okay. Public hearing call one?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Yes, this is Mr. and Mrs. Alexander with the Jeff Vanderloo Neighborhood Association.
Okay, and your comment is in reference to the Green Line Project, not the zoning, correct?
It's in reference to the Green Line and the zoning project. Yes, sir. It's kind of, it kind of works hand in hand. Yes, sir.
All right, I, you'll, I'll ask you then at that point to have your Green Line Conversation. We'll come back to the to the zoning issue if it has not been addressed, but go ahead. And we do ask public hearing statements to be no more than two minutes.
Okay, thank you. So we're here to um just make the, we're, we're trying to make the planning commission aware that uh Jeff Vanderloo is part of the community-led, community-driven plans uh that are working hand in hand with St. Louis Development Corporation. And with that said, uh, this particular amendment of the Strategic Land Use Plan, the, you know, the map and everything, um, I don't know if the commission is aware that um last year near the end of twenty twenty-three, our planning consultant was fired. And we kind of had to regroup and start over again. But I know that this Strategic Land Use Plan map was part of our strategies to rezone areas in our neighborhood that we wanted. So with that said, we are asking and requesting that uh Mr. Ogilvy and the parties of um that are, you know, that this, this amendment number twenty-six, we're asking them to come to our meeting, a Jeff Vanderloo Neighborhood Meeting, so we can get a clear understanding what this means, what this looks like. Uh, and we are in opposition of this MetroLink expansion. The metro leg to nowhere is what we call it on Natural Bridge that will run from Parnell to Grand because it is not servicing the north side. And we had several meetings uh with some people, and we also met with Mr. Toby Roach, uh, President and CEO of Bi-State. So cert, so there are some things in this amendment that we're not understanding, and we think it would be very fair for the community to understand before the commission goes forth with a vote in approval of this. So that's, that's our comment for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Uh, let me ask a question based off your statement. When is the Jeff Vanderloo next meeting?
Okay, so our next public meeting is the first Monday of May. However, we would like for this accommodation to accommodate uh the planning um department to meet with us on a separate date so that we can just, you know, make arrangements and accommodations for the parties to meet with us, not at a particular public meeting, but according to their schedule and ours.
With that said, then I would recommend that the staff reach out to the appropriate contacts for their organization and, and make those agreements or arrangements to have, have that discussion appropriately. Uh, so if you bear with me, Miss, I want to see if there's anyone else in the public hearing room at this point or the, or the amendment to the, to the map issue, not zoning. Call number one?
Yeah, that may really.
Call number.
Excuse me. Yes, uh, Ernst Stain Stewart, uh, for the um the, the map issue, and even with, with the map issue, if they decide to uh you all approve this, the impact, what, or, or you are even looking at the impact that it's going to have on the uh, the neighborhood, on our homes. You know, for the uh, the Green Line, when you all approve this for our area, because uh, um we've been in our homes forty-seven years, and it was a fight just to get the one seventy-four bill. And now here, here, here's, here's another battle uh coming up with the uh, the Green Line where they're saying everything they would, they, they would listen and hear is out. And the meeting I went to on the fifteenth this week seemed like, you know, for the Green Line, like they talk like they've already, you know, been approved and things have been uh already okay. And the guy, the head of uh person, Mr. Roach, he on national TV saying that he got the community approval. And I don't approve, and I know other community people, we have not uh approved anything. And from what I'm, I'm hearing now, you all haven't approved. So how can you get on national TV and say things or, you know, everybody with you and you and, and nothing's, you know, it's, it's like, like the, the devil jeopardy, some of devil talking.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Stewart. We hear your concerns, and I'll, I'll have staff address those in a moment or two. Public hearing, any other statements from public hearing?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I, please identify yourself in the organization.
This is Ruth Peppers.
I'm sorry, Ruth, we heard the.
Ruth? Okay, are you ready for me to uh
Your last name, please.
Address my issue?
Pepper. Okay, thank you, Ms. Pepper. Go ahead.
Okay, well, the reason that I'm on here is because um myself and a number of persons was included, uh, included, myself included, was asked to uh form a JVL redevelopment committee. And our responsibility was, and our major focus was to create a redevelopment plan for the betterment of the JVL neighborhood. Now, we've been working on this project for almost two years now. We've done our research, we're going to talk to professional people, uh, doctors, lawyers and, and general people, you know, in, in order to get a census of what people need and want in this community. And we've done that, we've done our homework. As a matter of fact, we had actually completed uh redevelopment plan one. So we already have a plan one and uh light rail was not included in that plan. Now, we're on plan two, and the light rail is not included in that. And what I'm talking about basically is that little area that's going through residential area. And I did my research, and I have not seen any, anything that is going through a residential area. And uh, we have a plan in place, and we don't want anything to throw our plan out of culture because this is something, apparently they venturing something new that I just can't see it really working. And so what we want to do is not for them to take that through there because it's really not uh picking up anybody of vital because they, well, we discussed that with them, but, but no. This is not, this is not going to work because they, they have expressed to us what they want and what they need in order to come back to the community because they left because we didn't have what they wanted. And so we addressed there. We heard them. We listened to them, and we applied accordingly. So we're asking you now to hear us with them and address your uh free use accordingly. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Pepper. Uh, any more public hearing statements for this?
Ms. Harris? I, I, I don't know. Can I speak now? My name is Ms. Harris.
All right, and you're with Ms., with whom, Ms. Harris?
JVL. I am also a resident of the JVL community.
Okay, please, two minutes, please. Go ahead.
Thank you. I have a concern because uh, it was just stated that it was the East West Gateway staff that made a uh recommendation and reassessed the routing. Uh, initially, when it was presented to us, uh, from my understanding, it was not to be actually routed straight down the corridor of Natural Bridge. And our concern as community is that, one, it is only a half leg uh or a half mile that will only be provided to the north side. Uh, I believe Mr. Roach had pointed out that the voters voted to have a MetroLink expansion on the north side, but that route or a route was not specified at the time that we voted for a north side expansion. And that half leg that we have named as leg to nowhere, it does not service our community, and we are concerned about if it's rezoned and accepted, the impact that it would have on our residents, on the uh structure of housing, uh acquisitions of land, and also how it would run parallel to a historical park that we find that it, that would be very disturbing to have a MetroLink running straight down the street along parallel, parallel to Fairground Park. And even if it stops at Grand and Natural Bridge, that's a very congested area. They have not presented to us anything as it relates to safety mechanisms, how to handle traffic control, if there will be uh acquisition of land for parking. So to approve this change or zoning just to accommodate what they want, that would be unfair, and I, I believe unjust to our community. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Harris. Uh, with that, any other public comments online at this point? Call number one for public hearing. Call number two for public hearing. Call number three for public hearing. With that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Banton, second by Commissioner Williams. Call for vote.
Previous role.
I hear a call for previous role. Any objections? Hearing no objections. With that, the public hearing is closed. Uh, prior to me calling on the commission, uh, let me first acknowledge Ms. Alexander, Ms. Harris, uh, Ms. Stewart and Ms. Pepper. I appreciate you standing in for your community. We are always happy when community members make their conversations and comments, especially if they're engaged and involved. So we do appreciate that. The first thing is, we have already kind of conversated with, uh, had a conversation with the staff that they will reach out to JVL and have that discussion. I am going to invite Don forward before I call for the commission uh for their questions.
Yeah. Certainly, one of the things I, I want to remind ourselves is the neighborhoods that these people represent are part of the Project Connect area and, and focus of SLDC uh in trying to make catalytic change for the benefit of the community from the NGA and other aspects. So when we mentioned that there was a planning consultant that left, it was a planning consultant not employed by PDA, was employed by SLDC. Uh, so there is many subtle layers here. One of the things is the operating segment uh is a step in getting federal funds. And so as some, some of our, our friends from JVL uh have been involved and passionate about their neighborhood for years, there was a previous endeavor that also had MetroLink Minimum Operating Segment on a segment of Jefferson uh along NGA. This one does too. It goes to Fairgrounds Park, as they noted, and that has now been revised and adopted um as the Minimum Operating Segment. This application uh going forward and review going forward of the evaluation of MetroLink anticipation of having our ducks in a row for a federal application. It is a change in the map, as I was standing back there, was to remind you all of us that the Strategic Land Use Map also has a transportation legend on it. And the Minimum Operating Segment is a, is an item under that transportation legend, and that's really what we're changing on, on this one. Is the, is updating the location on the map of the Minimum Operating Segment to coincide with the current one that, yes, indeed, was approved by uh East West Gateway. The next item will be some of the zoning aspects. So the part of this is, we'll pass along what we heard tonight uh to Project Connect and their ongoing work into the neighborhood.
Thank you, Don. With that, now I'll entertain questions and conversation from the commission and uh With that, now I'll entertain questions and conversation from the commission and, uh, Scott to stand up and I guess respond appropriately, uh, all the women Clark Harbor.
So, thank you. So my question would be, especially from what, um, Don just said, when you said you'll take what you heard back today, and then I know you said that you are committed to going to talk to that neighborhood and that community. What does that look, how does that translate to them? Like, if we pass it, do they have confidence in knowing that something can be changed with it, or is just real, realistically, what would it look like for them to, for us to move this today or not continue conversations? Or I know you said it was, uh, part of the federal grant, but I wanna make sure that we are clear and they are clear, especially since they took the time out this evening to be here on what it, what it means moving forward.
And, and before you, let me, let me add and carry it up. I made you that. Be clear on what you're asking us to do in layman's terms, please.
Yeah, well, let me, uh, answer all the, uh, Clark Hubbard's question first. Um, so I, I think the, the door is absolutely open for, you know, ongoing dialogue. I think there's a few avenues for that. I think there's the Project Connect Planning Avenue. There's also the ByState Project Avenue. Um, and so, you know, there's already been some, um, meetings between ByState and representatives of, uh, Jeff Vanderloo, and I think the plan was to continue that. Where the project is right now, we've been through, well, the project has been through multiple iterations of what are essentially conceptual design and where would it go? This update would allow the project to start moving into more serious engineering um, and dialogue with the F T A about funding. But embedded in that process is really a multi-year public engagement process. And I know a lot of the, um, concerns or questions are being raised. They are, they can be challenging to answer at this stage when we're just sort of talking about where it is. But those questions, um, will be answered through the engineering process and through the documentation of exactly what the project ends up looking like. And I think, you know, one thing I think we have recognized in the process is that even those of us who are pretty familiar with this, we all have a, a slightly different mental image of, of exactly what this looks like, um, because it's not fully designed yet. And I think it will get, um, as we, as the project moves forward, I think that the dialogue will be a little easier to have in some regards because I, I think people will be able to look at, um, very comparable projects in comparable settings. And we'll have, everybody will have a better understanding of exactly what this project would look like. And that's the phase that ByState, um, is really gearing up to do as we speak. Um, and so absolutely, it's the expectation that there will be, um, substantial ongoing dialogue with Jeff Vanderloo, but also with all the neighborhoods on the project corridor. Um, so that's definitely, uh, baked into what everyone plans on doing.
Check the plus all over there.
Yes. And Chair Strata, did you have a, you had a distinct question, maybe?
Well, no, I just wanna be sure that what we're being asked to do is understood by the community, what the planning commission is.
Sure, sure. So the, this action, this agenda item in front of the planning commission really just pertains to the, where a future light rail project is depicted on the strategic land use plan map. Um, there is a light rail project on today's strategic land use plan map that also is on Jefferson and Parnell and Natural Bridge. That is on the map today. This change doesn't actually change the route of that northern segment. Still Natural Bridge, still Parnell, still Jefferson. It actually just changes the routing south of Cass and north of Shoto, um, just to align with most updated route from East West Gateway that they have adopted.
So a visual map change, what is really?
Yeah, as, as Director Rowe mentioned, strategic land use plan map, it's land use designations, but it's also transportation elements. And so this would change the map for a future planned transportation element.
Scott, just a clarification, it, it does change the route because it, on the previous version, it goes up four centon.
There's, well, there's two options on that. There's the, there's the Cass, Jefferson to Parnell.
Oh, it showed both.
Option, and there's, yeah, so it shows, shows both on the current map.
With the, a reference to what is on the map.
Yeah, that's the main.
Reference that is once is on the map is from the previous minimum operating segment identified by East West Gateway. As of two months ago, when they voted on it, what we have on the map is incorrect. So our motion is to prove updating that map to be. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Baden.
No questions, just that, uh, to the folks that, that spoke, I, I will say that, um, you know, this, this particular piece that we're, we're considering right now is just for the map portion. And I understand that there are some concerns about this, uh, going through residential neighborhoods and it's a type of transit that, that Saint Louis had, would be new to Saint Louis and we haven't seen particularly in the past. I will say if it, um, as someone who is supportive of the project, I will say that this is something that has been done in many other cities successfully and it has brought investment to the neighborhoods that has gone through. And the hope is that similar, similar things will be done with this project. Um, and as we go forward with the zoning piece, um, at the, at the next item, we, we can dig into that a little bit more if there are still questions. But I would say that as, as it's been mentioned, there are gonna be ample opportunities to, for the neighborhood associations and residents to help shape the project to influence your neighborhoods in the most positive way possible. So, um, just keep that in mind.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Boyass, and then I'll come to Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Boyass.
No additional questions. I just appreciate all the questions and, um, how they've been addressed by everyone previously. Thank you.
You, Commissioner Bradley.
I have no questions. Thank you for clarifications.
Thank you. Commissioner Gormedia?
Uh, yeah, so definitely appreciate the public comment. Um, and, um, yeah, I just wanna say like I'll be voting to update the map and, uh, but definitely I think J V L should be definitely way more involved in the zoning piece. Um, and I wanna note that there are two public open houses on the MetroLink Green Line next week. Twenty third, April twenty third at Doorways, one thousand one North Jefferson Avenue on April twenty third and on April twenty, from five to seven P M. And April twenty fourth, there's one on Cherokee Center, thirty-two hundred South Jefferson Avenue. So, um, I, those are gonna be other opportunities to write feedback on how to make this proposed route work better. And, and make sure you all are involved in those conversations. Uh, J V L, now that you're gonna have two stops, um, very much. Not a question, but just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cowan?
Um, no questions, just Carla and the J V L votes. Uh, appreciate you guys coming out tonight and sharing your feedback to us. I'll follow up with city departments to make sure the mayor's office can do everything we can to make sure you all are hitting that you need and you're asking for and, well, hopefully we can continue talking.
You, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Williams.
All right. So first, thank you to the J V L community members that have provided public comment. I do have a few questions. Uh, first being, uh, has there been any input from S L D C since they were leading the planning process, uh, with the Project Connect neighborhoods um, on this, on this topic?
Specifically on the strategic land use plan?
Update to the, the MetroLink.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I characterize it as input specifically on the land use map, but there's been a lot of dialogue with S L D C over the last year plus as, as that, um, assessment has been done, joint city and by state assessment. Um, so very, yeah, very much so that they've been, I think, kept apprised of of what that planning work looked like.
Uh, let me, I appreciate that. Rephrase my question a little, or further clarify my question. With regard to the planning process that was taking place, uh, with the Project Connect neighborhoods, has S L D C provided any insight or input on this decision or process?
For the shepherds.
Right, understood. So they have been in conversation with the community members through this planning process. Um, I won't say absent of P D A, but they were leading that process.
Can you, would you say planning process? Do you mean the Project Connect planning process? What do you mean? Okay.
Correct.
Any consultant that was engaged in that for a long time.
Right.
Two of the staff members. And also even on to other things.
Understood.
Their process of hiring. And. Those two just.
Okay. Um, also, uh, a lot of the steps we're taking, the decisions we're making now are in pursuit of some federal funding, right? A grant. Is there a deadline that we're chasing here?
The, yes and no. So the, the first thing I'll say is, I think it would be good to do a more thorough project update at some point.
Yeah.
Which we would do jointly with, with ByState. But the F T A funding process, so the federal transit admini, administration process, um, it's called the Community Investment Grant. That's what funds major transit projects. A transit project like this anywhere across the country is almost certainly gonna be pursuing those funds. And most projects really need those funds in order to be able to pay for these, these types of investments. Um, the project is in a stage where it is now going to the F T A to start that dialogue. And so these projects, the, the C I G process, a couple of things to know about it is it is extremely competitive. Cities across the country want funding for major transit projects. And it is a discretionary program. So just, you know, having a project that we love doesn't always mean it's going to receive funding from the F T A. So every project tries to make the best argument for itself. Um, to demonstrate to the F T A that it is a good project and that there are supportive policies being made around that project. That is one of the criteria that the F T A uses to assess projects. And so in terms of, it's not the only criteria. There's a, there's a bunch of criteria, some of which relate to planning, others, nothing to do with planning. Um, so having the local land use map certainly has to align with what the, with what is presented to F T A. We can't tell them we're pursuing a project in one location and our map says it's in a different location. That's kind of a nonstarter. Um, and we are, I keep saying we, but it's really, it's ByState that is actually doing this. Um, ByState really is at that stage where that interface is beginning to happen and the project will likely be rated um, later this year, probably in the fall. So they're putting together the, the all of, a vast amount of data, basically, that supports the F T A assessment. And so that's, that's underway right now. And that initial rating, it's not the final rating, but it is a, it gives direction to a, to a city or a transit agency on, you know, where the project is strong and where it might be stronger. And every project then goes back and tries to improve their rating and improve their chance of receiving that funding. So that is where the project is. I don't wanna say there's like a deadline that's like tomorrow, but this is a very, this is an extremely timely thing. And I, I would emphasize that after, you know, there was a, there is a two thousand eight study, there's a twenty eighteen study. This is a twenty twenty four study. We are now at the point where the project is moving beyond studying and resources really being put into making it real, um, in a way that did not happen in prior iterations of this. Um, so the actions taken locally are, are very timely and important at, at this stage.
Thank you. Um, another question. Um, I think that um, not in any way by, by intent, uh, we've sort of diminished the value of this decision in response to the public comment we've heard. Uh, can you clarify for them the significance of this change in the strategic land use plan? To the map?
To the map? Well, that, so the, I mean, the map to pursue a project with the F T A, the map has to align with what the, with East West Gateway, our metropolitan planning organization, has to align with their map. Is that, their map has to say where the project is gonna go. That has happened. Um, so it makes sense that our local map be fully aligned with East West Gateway's map. And if those are not aligned, there's just, there's really no way for the F T A to assess the project because you've got different levels of government not even coordinated on where the project would be. So it's, I mean, it's absolutely essential that big picture that these two things are, um, that the East West Gateway decision is affirmed by the local government.
And after the decision is made, the, the regulatory significance or the power of that map is like, is it just that like, we, we voted on this and then tomorrow it'll be changed because we hear strong community opposition?
Um, no, I mean, I, I think we, it was changed six years ago in response to a very thorough assessment and another very thorough assessment has been done.
Right.
I think community support and potentially community opposition, those are elements that go into that assessment. Um, and they, that dialogue doesn't stop with this decision. There is a dialogue around the project itself. This is the map of the project. There's dialogue around the project itself and that dialogue is, has a couple of channels. It has federally, um, mandated dialogue through the N I P A process. But it also has the dialogue that needs to happen just around our local desire to have people understand the, the project, its benefits, its promises, all, all of those things. And so both of those, those channels on dialogue are, will continue to happen, are happening now. I mean, there's meetings next week, but those will go on really throughout the whole project development process.
But not about the route, more so about the project and what's happening around.
Um, yes, I'm not, I, I wouldn't say that the route can never change because it has changed in the past, but the route doesn't change arbitrarily. The only changes that happen to the route are based on a firm assessment because there are significant constraints all over in terms of building light rail. Um, and so you have to really be cognizant of all those constraints when you're deciding where a major project like this might go.
Right, all right. And then the last, I guess, is more of a comment than a concern. Um, sitting here listening to the public comment, I can't say that I clearly understand what the concerns are of the community members that did, so to speak. I just heard generally concern. Um, some of that which can be addressed just through clarification. Um, if there is time for that, I think that that should happen sooner than later. Um, and I think it will just help the process move forward. That's all. Thank you.
With that, uh, I, my last comment, I again, I do wanna recognize and thank those that are making pub, that make public statements because this is a basic community engagement. Uh, as I also understand, and not to diminish the change that we're making is a, is a cog in the wheels of this process. It is the map that has to be in that application that must be, uh, in line with all the other elements that are put together. And in the process, the, it continues to move. And with any grant or, 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 or process, if you have an error, it sends it back. And that's what we're trying to prevent, if I'm understanding, that that, that page is not an error in the process. Uh, and the community does have engaged opportunity to continue to engage with Project Connect and ByState along the process. Not that the route will or will not change, but the engagement is still there. Because this is not a. Because this is not a, this is not a one year process plan. So I want to be sure everybody knows this is, everybody's engagement is valuable. So with that, uh, I will bring it back to Don and then Scott for the final statements and recommendation.
Well stated, well explained. Uh, because our map is in error at the moment because it doesn't have the adopted minimum.
Yes.
That's one thing. Two, uh, I think it was last meeting where we had representatives from by state uh, and their consultant, the current consultant uh, here. Uh, and I expect they will be the people that will go to the meeting in Doorways, which is in the Jeff Vanderloo neighborhood on Jefferson. Uh, that's the page that uh the Commissioner Kramenia mentioned. So that's a good thing. And just those two things were things I want.
Right. With that, Scott, would you go review your recommendation?
Sure. Slide, maybe two slides. Um. Yeah, the recommended motion, so, so PDA staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Strategic Land Use Plan Amendment twenty six as described in Exhibit B of the Planning Commission Resolution. Um, updating the MetroLink Green Line locally preferred alternative route and affirming the February twenty eighth twenty twenty four action of the East West Gateway Council of Governments.
With that, I would entertain a motion. Right, your second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Khan, seconded by Commissioner Benson. Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowens.
Aye.
Aye.
Hi.
Hi.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now with that, we have a third item which piggybacks to this, which will be presented by Miriam and Scott. And again, there, there is a public hearing on this. If you're interested in making comments on this conversation, please either online, sign up, and at that point we will get we'll recognize at the appropriate time. If not, if you're present, please sign up with Michelle to my left and your right. Uh, right, with that, Miriam, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Um, Dylan who's working the computers and finishing up a communication with a member of the public. So agenda item number five, um, as the chair described, is a um zoning text change, and I'll, I'll describe, of course, what that means in a moment. But it's kind of tailored to take a what I will kind of genuinely characterize as a modest step in the direction of reducing barriers to transit supportive de- development in the corridor around the um future light rail project that we were just discussing. Next slide. So this, I, I think context was thoroughly discussed um by Scott and by the commission, but one of the um, kind of results or implications of that decision made by the East West Gateway Board of Directors is that this updated LPA, um, which is kind of a decision with, in the regional um transportation or, you know, metropolitan planning organizations authority. Now that that route has been updated, um, we as a community can with more clarity start to really think carefully about planning and land use around this corridor. You know, if we know where the train may go, that helps us think more clearly about what could happen around it. And um a- as described, this update also kind of begins the that extended technical relationship with the federal government involved in seeking um both approval and funding for the project from the federal government. Next slide. So this, this was presented um at the last planning commission meeting with the update from by state. Um, just the project in general has the goals of extending uh quality light rail transit north and south. Um, kind of for the purpose of connecting more people and more neighborhoods, improving transit service and supporting economic development in neighborhoods and access to jobs. So kind of have some images of comparable projects, but as Scott described, the precise design of the project will be part of the kind of long efforts uh before the region um to really imagine what this looks like, what it doesn't look like, and all of that involves both technical work, but also kind of the ongoing process of community engagement. Next slide. Here's a, a couple of more sort of reminders from by state's presentation last month that part of the goal of the project is also to meet environmental justice objectives of the Justice Forty Initiative, which is a, a federal initiative meant to um kind of correct environmental injustices. It would be five point six miles of dedicated light rail um line running in street. And it, it did with that LPA vote in late February secure regional support from the East West Gateway Council of Governments. Next slide. And this was um kind of one final piece of what HNTB particularly last month um as uh by state's project manager on this, this effort presented. Um, and yeah, Scott described this well, that the capital investment grant program is a discretionary program that is highly competitive and is evaluated on a whole host of criteria. Um, and you can see them and it displayed here in this wheel. Economic development is one portion of that. And what that criteria refers to is how well local policies align with the potential to make this um transportation investment um meaningful in terms of the economic development results and the areas around it. So you'll also see that land use criteria that describes actually existing land use, you know, what's, what's in the area around the, the station now. That, of course, isn't something um that any policy can immediately change. But the economic development criteria is more about the policies and their potential for positive impact. And um kind of generally speaking, that medium rating, um which in the case of the economic development criteria is a qualitative rating, but um that medium rating is sort of a, a baseline for the project to be considered. Um. Kind of on both sides of this wheel, project justification on the left and local financial commitment on the right. Next slide. So this zoning item references the idea of reducing barriers to transit oriented development or transit supportive development, and we thought it would be of value to even describe um kind of what we mean as, as a staff when we say that. Um. And we have, are defining TOD here actually using the Federal Transit Administration's definition, which is compact mixed use communities near transit where people enjoy easy access to jobs and services. And so in the consideration of kind of policies that contribute to that or development that um actualizes that goal, you can kind of see here the list of uh what that would look like. So preserve and revitalize disinvested communities. Diversify the housing stock. So, you know, not all just one type, many different types of housing so that many different types of households can access transit. Um, increasing and also I'll add preserving the supply of affordable housing. And I think here we particularly mean dedicated affordable housing. Increasing ridership, of course, and reducing congestion, improving walkability and air quality, uh, reducing greenhouse gas emissions as a byproduct of all of these things. And encouraging public private development that, and, and not just development for its own sake, but development that meets these particular goals listed here. Next slide. So um, you know, zoning is one tool for encouraging transit oriented development. Not the only tool, um, but it is one important tool. As the right zoning policies can allow for and even encourage TOD. Zoning, um, you know, a- as the commission knows, it will not change any city or any place overnight, and especially in a place like St. Louis. Um, you know, what I think we're describing here or creating the potential for is a slow evolution through the right zoning policy toward more transit supportive land use. And the fourth point is that or third, um, zoning policy can be incremental, and you'll see in what I described here in a moment that this recommendation or kind of proposal before the planning commission is not um the, the, you know, the single zoning policy recommendation. Uh, it is what we envision as sort of a first small step in a more transit supportive direction. But the, the fourth piece here is that it, it really is, um, this was borne out in um kind of lessons from around the country. It's really important to think about zoning policy and development po- policy in advance of transit investment. Otherwise, by the time that transit goes in, um, it, it will be, it, it will, you know, take more time to allow for the development around it that um will give people access to transit and its potential benefits. So um, it's a little bit of a early and often approach here that um, that we are recommending. Next slide. So here was our attempt to kind of put on one slide the cons, this, the complicated context that we're in where on the left, we have a um, a whole host of studies and plans, some specific to transoring development. Also many neighborhood plans, um, some very recent, some um that are currently in the process of being updated. And then on the right in this timeline is um some of the milestones that have recently been met, right? The local preferred alternative adoption in early twenty twenty four. And then, I wish I had a little pointer, but you can see the um yeah, Dylan, thank you, Dylan. Um, kind of this orange bar that we're in right now prior to this initial submission to the Federal Transit Administration where we kind of have this, this short window for um considering some updates to zoning policy that are more transit supportive. But on the bottom of the slide is this context of all of this really important planning that's happening right now. Top of the list is Project Connect Neighborhood Planning. Um, we know that that is underway. We know that that has had some bumps in the road, and we know that no major um decisions should be made until uh that, that planning is complete. So our, and, and also, of course, we're in the process of kind of fully updating the citywide strategic land use plan with the um the plan, then to follow that on with the citywide zoning code update. Uh, we are just about to, or, or maybe I can say we have launched the citywide transportation mobility planning process, but that has been a kind of internal kickoff. Anyway, like a lot of planning going on. And of course, as a follow on to that planning, there will be lots of opportunities for policy updates. But right now we're in that kind of window where we can uh, we do have the opportunity to allow for somewhat more transit supportive policy, but we also don't want to make any big moves because of things like Project Connect Neighborhood Planning and all of this other planning work that is going, going on. So that is all just context for um, how we've arrived at the zoning changes that we are about to share here, zoning text amendment as um and again, I, I think a pretty modest step toward transit supportive policy, but real, not a, a major um leap forward or a major change. It's, it's kind of like a, a nudge in, in the right direction, and actually a nudge that is kind of in keeping with the allowing for the types of development that match the historical character and development pattern of these neighborhoods. And I'll, I'll return to that point in a little bit. But now this is a complicated slide, but wanted to really let the commission and the public in on our logic for um kind of where we are in this broader planning timeline. Next slide. So of course, before we um discuss any changes to zoning in this corridor, wanted very clearly describe kind of what the existing zoning is. So here is a map that shows the locally preferred alternative uh alignment, the updated alignment. And all of the zoning districts within a uh one half mile radius of the stations that again are part of that locally preferred alternative alignment. And then on the right, a breakdown of um, or sort of enumeration of how much of this broader area is composed of these different types of zoning districts. So a lot of it is B to family, C multiple family. Um, you can see here nearly forty or fifty percent of the whole corridor. I'm going to use the term corridor, and by that I mean kind of the uh combined half mile radiuses, radii around all of these station areas. And of course, on Jefferson are some of our mixed use and commercial districts. So F, G, and H, and some of those also, of course, kind of extend beyond Jefferson. You can see some F and G going up and down Gravoy, for example. Um, G uh just south of uh the southeast of the Cass Avenue Station as shown here, and then west of that. Um, a good share of the I Central Business District, which you can think of as our downtown district. And then also uh quite a bit of the industrial district and K unrestricted district. That is kind of the composition of zoning in the corridor now, and um I'll, I'll share a little bit more in a moment, kind of how transit supportive those things are or are not. Uh, next slide. We also, um, and both of these analyses were done in partnership with HNTB, which is that firm working um kind of that as a project manager for by state on this effort. That, and Michael Booth was with us last month at the planning commission meeting. We looked at vacant property in the corridor, and here we mean both land and buildings using the um uh data from the city's open data portal. And you can see that the lion's share of um vacant property is in that B and C district again, then also quite a bit in F and G. So when we think about the potential for um you know, reinvestment in neighborhoods around this corridor, of, of course, vacant land are, that, that's, that's some of the um I mean, I'll say, you know, hopefully some of the areas where we do see um reinvestment and revitalization in um kind of the most positive way possible in concert with this transit investment. Uh, next slide. So this was my attempt to kind of break down these existing zoning districts into um kind of a little bit of a rating system. So when we look at zoning, we would look at districts that allow for mixed use development as relatively more transit supportive. Districts that allow for more density as relatively more transit supportive, and so on, related as with height. Um, not requiring as much parking. And then things that would not be transit supportive are districts that allow uses which conflict with um kind of easy, safe access to transit stations. So you might think of something like a gas station or a drive through as not contributing to a transit supportive environment where it's easy to walk around, take the train, create a comfortable place for people to access transit. And the boxes around these different things on the grid are um what the recommended text amendment recommends tweaking just a little bit. So you can see that as relates to housing density, um the, the recommendation or kind of proposal before the planning commission is to tweak that to allow just a tiny bit uh more housing density in districts B through H. To tweak the allowed height, um, just by one story and F and G. and to reduce modestly the amount of parking required. And so here the description is for housing because for commercial uses, it, it just varies really dramatically by use. But the recommendation is to modestly reduce the parking requirement for housing as well as retail, restaurants, groceries, and other office in, um, districts B through H and then also J and K. Because even though J and K allows for uses that are not transit supportive, they do also allow for uses that some of those other commercial districts like F and G and H, um, allow because our zoning code for the, for the most part is kind of cumulative, meaning that uses allowed in less intensive districts like, like A, B, and C are, for the most part, again, allowed in other districts as well. So things like retail or grocery stores, um, and some other things like that are not restricted necessarily in J and K. Um, and so we are, uh, recommending, and I'll kind of repeat some of the stuff in a different way. We're recommending a parking reduction there as well, but not parking reduction for an industrial use. That, that's not the recommendation. Next slide. So there are different types of ways of changing zoning policy or making a zoning decision. And, um, I've kind of listed them here in a simplified way. There's changing the underlying rules in the code. There's changing the designation of a kind of specific parcel or set of parcels on the map. There's establishing an overlay district like a form-based district or a special use district. That creates like pretty place-specific rules for parcels in an area. And then there are of course variances which are, um, more parcel or parcels specific exceptions to the underlying zoning rules based on kind of particular circumstances of that property. Next slide. And what we are bringing to the planning commission tonight is a zoning code change rather than any changes to the map or any overlay districts. And then variances aren't really something we could recommend as a proactive policy. They're more of a, again, exception to the rules, um, after a property submits a building or occupancy permit and, and is denied that based on, um, the rules within zoning. Next slide. But in the future, um, and I do imagine the potential for, uh, recommending these zonings, for example, uh, those recommended by the project connect neighborhood plans. And also the creation of an overlay district like a form-based district that would allow for a, a more targeted approach than a text amendment would allow for. So numbers two and three, we are not recommending right now. Because those, we really, really need, um, the project connect neighborhood plans and also the strategic, the citywide strategic land use plan. We need those to be much more substantially complete and/or, you know, formally adopted before we bring those, those types of changes. Next slide. Here is the recommendation kind of on one slide. So just in the near term here, a text amendment that would, um, allow just a slightly bit, a slightly more flexibility, um, for parcels that are within those one-half mile radii of proposed stations. So parcels in the green line corridor, um, requiring just a little less parking, um, in zones B through H and in J and K, as I was describing. So the current requirement for residential uses is generally speaking, one space per unit. And then again, the parking requirement for commercial uses varies by, by use. You know, it's different for a grocery store than it is for a, uh, you know, massage parlor and so on. I probably kind of misstating that, but Mary, um, Hart Burton will be able to, um, shed more light on how those requirements vary. So parking requiring a little bit less, um, lot size. In our current code for housing uses, the way that housing density is regulated is by requiring a certain amount of lot area for each unit. And those requirements vary by district, but in, um, many districts, for example, a single-family unit requires 4,000 square feet of lot area. Two-family units in a two-family building require in some districts, uh, 2,500 square feet of lot area per, um, per unit and in others require 1,500. And then, you know, kind of it goes on district by district. And in the resolution, one of the tendencies is, or exhibits is exhibit A, which is a table that shows, um, kind of the existing zoning rules right next to you, proposed exceptions or what they would, what they would be if this change were recommended by the planning commission and put into effect through the legislative process. So anyway, lot size, we are recommending to allow for, um, a little bit more housing on each lot. And then height, the recommendation is to allow for one additional story in zones F and G. So the current maximum in F and G is three stories. And, um, this exception would make parcels in this corridor eligible to add one additional story. Dylan, if you go back a slide to that table, uh, with the red and the, yeah, thank you. So in this height column, I want to kind of show how the stories back up in our code, generally speaking, it's, it's always just a little bit more complex than these high-level summaries. But generally speaking, in A and B, it's a maximum of two and a half stories, in C and D, a max of three. Then in E, up to eight feet, if there are appropriate setbacks. Then in F and G, three stories, and then again in H, jumping up to eight stories. So part of the idea here, uh, this is sort of a, a kind of a feature of our zoning code that applies citywide, of course. And in the future, it may make sense, again, with the strategic land use plan updated and so on, to think about, um, a little bit more of a smooth transition to allow for something between three and eight. Right now, that's not really contemplated in our code outside of areas with a form-based district or outside of a variance process. And again, I described that really generally. Uh, zoning administrator Mary Hart Burton can kind of correct where those generalities are off, um, as, as we get into discussion. So now we can look back ahead to. So here's another way of, of seeing the recommendation. In zones B through H, we would allow, um, this recommendation is to allow a little bit more flexibility on parking and lot size, or you can also think of that as housing density. To allow that additional story or up to an additional story of height in F and G. And then down in J and K for that same parking flexibility for, um, housing, retail, grocery, restaurant, and general office uses that are allowed in, in J and K to allow that parking reduction there as well. Next slide. So here I get into kind of the specific language of the regulations. And this is also in that, the updated resolution available online and also sent out to planning commissioners. This is also kind of now presented in board bill form. But the language here would create a new subsection within this use height and area exceptions part of the code. So on the right, I kind of have a screen grab of our, our code from Unicode. And the way it works is, um, you know, of course there are definitions up top. Uh, as you go down a little bit, there are, um, sections that describes the regulations for each of the different zoning districts, A, B, C, D, and so on through L. And there are a couple of kind of special chapters like related to marijuana uses or how special use districts can be created and regulated. And then there's this existing section in the zoning code that has use height and area exceptions. And the thought here is to add a new subsection within this use height and area exceptions that applies specifically to these transit station areas defined as this half-mile radii around the stations within East West Gateways LPA. Next slide. And then the next three slides here, um, describe each of the components of the exceptions that are being proposed. So parking reduction, um, would be reduced for residential, restaurant, grocery, and other retail and professional and general office uses in zones B through H and in J and K by up to 25%. And they would still have to meet the parking lot layout standards defined elsewhere in the code. So that is the language. And then on the right, kind of provided a little bit of the context and rationale. And I've also highlighted in blue text, some of the public comment that we've received.
Excuse me for one second. Pause for a second.
Take a sip of water for a minute.
So this is our last action. I have a couple more, thank you. Earl needs to excuse himself.
I have a form.
Roger. So, uh, for all of you, just make one last motion. Nominate Jake and then chair for you.
Yes.
I will entertain a motion. I must leave and I'm nominating Jake Benson standing here for tonight for the remainder of the meeting.
Second.
A second. Is it?
I make the motion.
Did I make the motion?
Didn't.
Okay. I didn't know if I could make my. If your call the roll.
I.
Do I vote on this?
I.
I.
Mr. Bradley.
Hi.
India.
Hi.
Chris.
Bye.
Hi.
Hi.
I'd say.
Have a good evening. Yeah, thank you.
I'm following that supervision. Say.
I'll have to leave in a minute. Welcome pause from, from my perspective. I know I'm going in deep here, but I, I just want to make sure that the proposals, you know, very fully explained before discussion. So the language on the left, we covered, but then the context and comment on the right, I, I was just mentioning that the blue text is used to denote public that we've written comment that we've received, specifically in relationship to this, um, proposal. So some of the context for this parking reduction is that this 25% reduction actually kind of aligns with, um, the type of off-street parking demand that we see development actually kind of wanting citywide. And this, this is a little bit of a general assessment, but, um, it is true that frequently, people kind of seek and receive variances for parking reductions. So there's certainly some evidence that, um, it, uh, development can work with less than that one space per unit level. And it, it happens not infrequently. We've also looked at some other cities that have totally eliminated parking requirements to see then what, what's the result? And we found that generally speaking, people who don't require any parking at all, or cities that don't require any parking at all, people still build about half a space per unit or three quarters of a space per unit. So this reduction might get us somewhere close to where we might be if we didn't require parking at all, while still kind of safeguarding for residents that there would be some parking required. Again, I kind of hinted at this, but by requiring less parking, part of the idea is to reduce the request for variances so that development in this corridor, um, wouldn't have to seek a special approval for having less parking. And then, um, we did receive some comment, uh, from the public that suggested further lowering or even eliminating the requirement. Comments suggested that both citywide and as pertains to this specific corridor, and also including the A single-family dwelling district in this parking reduction. The reason we didn't include A is because, um, there's really just a very, very small part of this corridor that is zoned a single family. So we wouldn't be picking up, um, a lot of, uh, if you will, like benefit from that change. And, um, I think it's been our experience that residents who live in a single-family dwelling districts have a higher expectation for things like parking. And I think it kind of asking the question about whether that should be our policy long-term is very appropriate. And he, um, our, our instinct was not necessarily to make that recommendation within this, this change, given the sort of near-term window we're working within. But you know, this, this is a proposal for the planning commission's discussion. And then the final point here, and this will be a recurring point. Once the project connect neighborhood plans are done and once, um, the strategic land use plan update is done, we plan to proceed with a form-based district for this transit corridor because, um, that, that is really a great use of the form-based district tool to recognize kind of the particular constraints and opportunities in a, in an area and respond to them with specific place-based zoning policy. So we already kind of have wheels in motion to begin that work, but that is not going to be finalized or refined or anything until, um, it can be fully informed by the project connect neighbor, neighborhood plans, existing neighborhood plans, and also the strategic land use plan. Next slide. I may try to pick up the pace here. I know this is a, a long meeting. Density of population, the language is to reduce the lot area requirement by up to 40%. And the context is this would permit development of a good amount of vacant land in the corridor. Um, and again, by skipping the requirement for a variance, so make it a little bit easier to develop vacant land. And to develop that vacant land with housing. Again, we did receive a comment that, hey, why not include a single family? I think, um, kind of the rationale that I shared as relates to parking applies to density of population as well. But again, up for discussion and the form-based district could take this up again. Next slide. Height, the proposal is to, um, allow development in the F and G districts to be erected to a height of four stories or 60 feet rather than the current three stories or 45 feet. And the context I shared a little bit already, we received comment saying, hey, why not go further with height? The reason we haven't proposed that is that as a text amendment, this would apply flatly across the radius. So we wouldn't be able to get that sort of tapering down from immediately next to a station area to the edge of that half-mile distance. And kind of testing it, uh, with some properties in St. Louis, we felt like more than four stories at the F of the, the edge of that half-mile distance. We, we couldn't be as confident that that would be in keeping with the, the character of those areas. Thank you, Walter. Like I'm losing my audience. I'm just kidding. I know. Long night, um, but all, okay, um, next slide. So we, uh, with Dylan Saber's help, he did a lot of work on this to illustrate. So we with Dylan Sabershaw, he did a lot of work on this to illustrate. Hey, what would the impact of these new regulations be on sort of an example property? This is like a little bit anonymized, right? Because the point isn't to think about very specific properties, but to think about types of properties in this corridor. And so this is what would be possible under the existing zoning regulations. You could fit up to eighteen housing units, but you sort of max out there based on the density and parking and height restrictions. This is an example in the G district. But next slide. The changes would allow for, I mean, not guarantee, right? But allow for up to this level of density and height. So on this example parcel, you could fit if these recommendations were adopted, up to twenty nine housing units. Next slide. So I'm kind of nearing the end here, I promise. We checked this, of course, against the existing land use components of the strategic land use plan. The kind of lion's share of land in the corridor is designated neighborhood preservation area, neighborhood development area, neighborhood commercial area, specially mixed use area and opportunity area. And these zoning changes would certainly be in keeping with the things that those designations call for, albeit, you know, they are broad as citywide land use designations. Excellent. But we also looked at all of the adopted neighborhood plans in the corridor. And again, you know, it's very much acknowledging that the project and neighborhood plans are still underway. So, you know, we have kind of spoken in depth, collaborated with the neighborhood managers in the project connect area on this. And they they are aware of this context and have kind of provided some input into it. But these are the neighborhood plans kind of formally adopted by the planning commission. Next slide. And here's a table that resolution details this a little bit further, but here's a table that describes some of the elements in these neighborhood plans that kind of we found in conformity with the recommendation here. Now, a lot of these neighborhood plans were made before this alignment was updated by East West Gateways. So they don't all kind of contemplate specifics around the alignment, but as Scott referenced before, parts of the alignment haven't moved. And so the idea of TOD in this area is is referenced pretty consistently in these plans, especially more recent ones. Next slide. We made a genuine attempt at some significant outreach and soliciting input on this. So made several presentations, emailed all neighborhood associations that we had and organizations that we had contact for in the corridor to invite them to make them aware of the proposal. So we we shared a a handout by email and also shared a link to a more extended memo we had on the website. We invited them to a webinar that we held last week that had a Q and A portion, and that since has been published to YouTube. We've had a survey open through which we've collected comments and those have been shared with the planning commission. Next slide. That closes my presentation. And now yep, and now have the opportunity for a public hearing.
Great, thank you. I don't know if our zoning administrator, Mary Hart Burton, is still online or not. Mary, are you online?
I'm here. Yes.
Do you have any additional comments you'd like to add before we open public hearing?
I don't have any additional comments and good job, Miriam.
All right. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Miriam, for the very thorough presentation. With that, we'll move to open the public hearing. Just a reminder, I don't see many people online anymore, but if you do have a comment that you'd like to say at the public hearing, please raise your hand, make a comment online or see Michelle, who's walking in the door now. Oh, three online. Okay, great. Thank you. And keep your comments to two minutes, please. So with that, I ask for a motion to open the public hearing. It's been moved and seconded. Call for vote, please.
All for my number.
I.
Mr. Moen.
I.
I.
Bye.
Bye.
Hi. Hi. All right. Thank you. With that, I will ask the all right. Mr. Mrs. Stewart, could you please state your name and the organization with you with and please present your comment?
Okay, Ernestine Stewart, JBL. And my comment is about where they're saying to put this here, they didn't take in any consideration of the noise and our homes being over a hundred years old with that sound and the value of the homes. No one is going to move, want to move, just like by the airport now where where they put the the by state out there. Those homes have decreased in value. And the people there all tried to move and they fought also not to have that out there. And now we we're having, they making it sound like like it's already to me like most people, they talk like they already there. They are, I see them already digging down Jefferson, digging up the ground and that street is not as stable as what they think. They already have over there where the word division and the sewer people are dealing with with the whole street giving in. So that street is already not stable. When you're going to put that there, plus have us deal with our homes and the noise in the area not being considered that our property is already over a hundred years old. It's almost like depreciating the bill that we got for the one seventy four bill. So you're going to come back and make us uncomfortable in our own in our own community. And 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 I oppose, I'm not, I'm not, not good with that. Now that time where they had all this out, certain things. I'm always on there looking for things when they're out asking about stuff. I'm always popping up places. I'd have popped up all the way down in Jefferson City for the for another bill. So I'm definitely, if I hear something, I'm there and I share with the community and the community shares back with me. And they had a meeting before this, and now you have the person over by state on the news saying that the community is backing him. What community is he talking about? Is it out there by the airport? Because it's not down here by us. And and I don't see the versatile for the housing because you all put those new homes up and then that sound, no one is going to want to buy or move in that area right there with all that noise.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Could you remind remind us what what neighborhood you currently residing?
I'm in the JBL.
Great, thank you. With that, your your two minutes is up. I will pass to the Ms. Peppers.
Thank you. What I
Ms. Pepper, could you state your name and your neighborhood organization, please?
JBL Peppers.
Thank you.
What what a lot of people, I don't know if they realize that natural ridge, it just is another thought for it, is a very visible area. And that's where our plan was to build the renovated homes and and make it then green, you know, more green space and and just make it more welcome when people are buying. They want to see what what's in that neighborhood? You know, what homes are there? What type of family live there? So versus to, I'm giving you a ride. Now the ride is coming from south. Who are they picking up in the south? By the time they get there to the north, the person should have walked down to Grand. So I'm not seeing really the benefit and keep saying things are historical in a black community doesn't mean anything if you're tearing up the community. You know, it's a, what do they put it in the stand at Fairground Park? Some kind of stand for the light rail. You know, and then they're going to make parking space. Oh, that's really historical. That's really building up our community. Now, we was assigned to build up our community, to draw people in, and that's what we were focused on. If they had told us this, I would have been glad to give some ideas, electrical, that's what they're looking at now. Get electrical bus. There's a whole lot of things that could be done other than tearing up the street, tearing up people homes, you know? It apparently a lot of thought. If you look behind the money, you don't think unless you living perhaps in the community. So it's easy for people to say, oh, look, look at the shiny penny. You know, don't worry about you losing millions of dollars on what they're doing to your home and different things like that. So the shiny penny doesn't impress me. What impressed me is people that will help build the community. So St. Louis could be on the map to say, yes, this was, this is a black historical community. And look what happened. Instead, look what happened. You know, so that's all I have to say about it. You know, it is, to me, it's a disgrace that they would they would come in and just scratch our idea and say, I'm gonna give you a ride and ride down the street. That's about when they would get on the bus, I mean, on the train.
All right, thank, I appreciate your comments, Ms. Pepper. And I, we do really appreciate you sticking around. I know this is a long, a long meeting, so sticking online and to be able to testify is is very much appreciated. I know all the commissioners here really appreciate hearing from community members. So thank you. Alexander. Miss Alexander.
Yes, hello again.
Hello.
So.
If you could, please restate your name and your organization.
This is Mr. Yes, Mr. And Mrs. Alexander. Mr. Alexander is not on all, but we're a team and we're representing Jeff Bandaloo neighborhood.
Thank you.
Yes, we would just like to express to the planning commission again, this is just highly contrary highly contrary to the community led, community driven plan that we have in place for six neighborhoods to draft their neighborhood plan as what we see into the future for our neighborhoods. When we look at the the years that have gone by, by state, they're basing this on a two thousand eighteen study that's six years ago. They had a vote eight years ago, which the ballot was not route specific of where infrastructure and this kind of you know, transportation or transit should go. It was not route specific on the ballot in two thousand sixteen. And then let's go back a little further, a study that they did in two thousand eight. That's sixteen years ago. All we were asking for them to do is to come to the table current. See where we are, our population has changed, things have changed, people have moved out, people have come in. And that's all we were asking now with this neighborhood planning process. Community driven, community led. By state, you would have thought, okay, we're coming to you guys now. We understand things have changed. How can we reroute this? How can we do that? We had no other route alternatives, none. So they came in with a plan to tell us this is what we're going to do, and it's highly contrary to the vision that we have for JBL. Our vision for historic preservation does not have a light rail from Parnell all the way to Grand and stopping, stopping. Our community plan consisted of land use and zoning, housing and vacancy, connectivity, parks and open spaces, economic development, education and youth, health and safety, arts, culture and historic preservation. And here we go again. People telling us what they want to do and not us, you know, not, we don't have the input like is expressed in all the emails, all the promotions, all the news media, it's not what it's not right. And all we're saying is we're supposed to be involved with planning. From the beginning, we asked, was there a city plan? Is there a city plan? No. You guys are the ones that's going to do this. You're the one that's going to lead this. But now you have seen it's clear as day, we're not involved in this process at all.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Your two minutes is up. If I may ask a quick question. Did you hear about these these meetings about this zoning amendment? Or did you participate in any of those meetings?
The thing about it is Jeff Vanderloo was never really contacted, not contacted. The Jeff Vanderloo Neighborhood Association was not contacted. Yeah, they do these public postings and whatever they have and all these surveying and everything. But no, not directly. We were not. They, Ms. Keller, I mean, we appreciate, you know, the the thoroughness and everything with the charting and everything. We have thorough, we have charts and graphs and designs and everything too for what our vision is. But we don't get the opportunity to. So all we were asking is for Ms. Keller's team, we need to revisit this. We need to look at this and decide until, you know, before the planning commission just pushes this on through without the real community input. That's all we're asking. So thank you for asking it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'll just make a quick note. Ms. Alexander's mother was an iconic member of the at least corner.
Oh, Mr. Row.
Yes.
Row, that was my grandmother.
Thank you, thank you. With that, do we have any other folks that would like to testify for the public hearing? Online, all right. Going once, going twice. That asked for most.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm here. I'm sorry. I was driving. I'm sorry. I didn't want to turn the phone on while I was still on the highway.
Okay. Could you please state your name and your organization or neighborhood, please?
This is Ms. Harris, JBL Community Residential. And yes, I do have a concern. I listened as much as I possibly could glean information from what was provided, the zoning information. And I am in agreement with Ms. Alexander that it does not marry up with what we spent time in planning with St. Louis Development Corporation. And it seemed like there are so many entities with their own agendas. And yet, no, they have not come to the table with our community and introduced this to us. We ask, what was the city plan? We ask, what are the changes that are designed for our community? We have been very transparent in our interest, our mission. We are vested in our communities. We have lived there for years. We have a concern about people constantly government coming into our communities and not including what they call the underserved community, the minority community. We hear this trendy conversation, economic development. Everyone wants to plan for our community, but they don't include our community. They don't include the voice of the people. Last, but definitely, definitely not least, we don't have an interest in multi level housing. It's a residential community. We would love to keep it as single private community. We don't want all of those commercial development for multi level housing and all of those beautiful things for what she mentioned in her charting. It all sounds nice, but you don't take into consideration the complications and the problems that go along with it. And I would like for each of the persons that are sitting here that's making this decision, would you want a metro link rolling down the middle of the street in front of your home? Would you want them to change your community from a private residential community to making it a a commercial mixed use community with multi level housing? Those are just basic questions that I think any of us should be concerned about when it's going to impact where our safety is, where we rest our head, where we live, make a living and provide for our families. So to come in there and disrupt our community like that, I think it's very egregious. You have all these policies and all of these codes and all of these things. And at some point in time, it's just all confusing. That's not my area of expertise. But listening to what she is saying, no one gave us any information on any specific route or alternate routes. I understand Fourth Street is I understand Fourth Street is a commercial area that could be best utilized to connect, uh, South and North. We, I'm just really, uh, very concerned and frustrated that we were not even given the consideration to present that or even put it on the, on the, uh, proposed for a vote from the community. What route will we be interested in? And I understand that they're going after the money, they have to lock this in, but don't rush. Think it through, include the people, and maybe we could come together and have a collaborative agreement on how to make this work. We're not anti-metro link, we're simply concerned about the rezoning and metro link coming down that half-leg mile going to nowhere in St. Louis City. It does not serve our interests. Thank you.
Thank you so much, really appreciate those comments. Are there any other, and, and please note that we are taking notes and, and making sure all of this is captured, so thank you. Any other comments? All right, go once, twice, ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Call for vote?
Pre, oh, can we do previous roll?
Aye. Oh, previous roll.
With that, I heard previous roll, any objections? All right, public hearing is closed. Thank you all for sticking with us. I will now go to let planning commissioners ask any questions of staff, and I'll start with Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
I did, I'm, thank you, um, for acting chair, I didn't, I didn't, but I wanted to make sure I, um, address you properly. Uh, did, did, um, Mary have any additional comments before I speak?
No, I have none.
Okay, uh, let's see. Everyone knows, I'm sure that, that, uh, I am now gonna be challenged with this one after hearing, I'm sure if they follow how I, um, how I present in any space down there, the community involvement and community engagement is very high on my list, so it's heartbreaking to hear, um, the, uh, testament, testimonies from these constituents. Even though I, they're not my, directly my constituents, I still have to act as if if they were mine, I would want somebody to stand in the gap, um, the way that I would want to be in a position to stand in the gap. And not that we can, uh, not that one person can stop anything, but again, I have to be comfortable with how, um, I show up in these spaces. And hearing from, uh, these constituents, again, is just heartbreaking for me. So I just want, if the planning commission or if anyone is there that can kind of give some ease to any of the comments that were made, I would like to be able to hear that, that side of it. And then in moving forward, I also want to commit, um, myself to you all that are on the call. Please reach out to me, I'm gonna definitely try to be at one of the meetings either at doorways, um, more importantly, probably at doorways. Um, and then in moving forward, this is one of the things that I champion for all of the time is community engagement and community input, and I think everyone in the room probably knows that by now. Um, so I just, again, want to give the opportunity for, um, Miriam, knowing that you all have made the, the commitment, the verbal and public commitment here tonight to go and meet with them. Um, specifically, I would just still like to hear if there's any, any response to any of the comments that were made during those public testimonies, and then I'll follow back up with that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I similarly hear the, I mean, the frustration and disappointment and, um, people's voices. I, I do want to make sure that the commission knows. I, um, I did share this information with the Jeff Vanderloo Neighborhood Association and received a confirmation of receipt. I'm not saying that that means all of the information got to all of the people that needed to hear it. And I'm not saying that even beyond that, I reached out to everybody I needed to, but I, I reached out to certainly Jeff Vanderloo Neighborhood Association and, um, everybody else I had contact information for. And also, um, presented Monday evening at the Project Connect Town Hall. Again, I'm not saying that that is sufficient to address the concerns, but I, I don't want, um, the commission or the public to think that we didn't even reach out to Jeff Vanderloo, because I certainly did.
Can we confirm, because again, with my, with me working in community, I know sometimes that there are, uh, uh, how can I put it? There might be the Greater Jeff Vanderloo Committee, the Jeff Vanderloo Committee, the, the one that you're saying you reached out to. Can we confirm that the one that you reached out to, that the mem, the public that's present this evening, that there's their group again, and moving forward, since we made a commitment to meet with them, I wouldn't want it to be that we, you're meeting with another group. I know some neighborhoods have several groups within them.
Yeah, and so the, the other, I think, really important point is that we need to continue, uh, and we, we have, but continue coordinating with the neighborhood managers that serve the Project Connect neighborhoods. Um, if, so I, I reached out to JBL Neighborhood Association dot, well, no, that's not the email. JBL Neighborhood Association at gmail dot com. If that is not the right email address for the organization you all are with, if you would do me the kind of the favor of sharing your contact information in the chat, in the Zoom chat. And, okay, Dylan's giving me a thumbs up that they did. I, I just really want to make sure that we have the right contact information, both for kind of the immediate follow-up that we'll do with you and then long-term as well.
Thank you, thank you for that, and I will say, as an other person who has worked with the, and I I understand the role, uh, well, I'm understanding more and more here, the role of those neighborhood managers. But I also understand that they have been moved around. And here, it was announced today, I think that this, this even changed again since you all met, uh, with, with them. So I'm asking that the commitment be made not to even just stop at the neighborhood manager to intentionally, um, work with the leadership in that, within that organization. Because here, we don't know if that's gonna move around again before anything is even moved forward with this down at the board or anything. And so, um, uh, I think I'm, I think I heard that Maya White might be over Project Connect now. And I will say that I, I have, uh, experienced her commitment in the community, so that's reassuring and and because she's worked in the West Stand before, but even with that, I think making sure that, that we touch them with them being here tonight and with their, um, organization being represented the way it is tonight, that we don't get, we don't find ourselves in this place again, where it's just, again, uh, where we hearing that it just feels like they're just feeling ignored. Because I don't want to be a part of any group that makes any constituent one or five thousand feel ignored in any kind of process.
Thank you, Alderwoman.
Well, I just want to affirm that I hear that we will absolutely not stop with just a conversation with Project Connect's neighborhood managers, but we'll, um, and reach back out in coordination with them to make sure that what we hear in this dialogue is also heard by the people leading the neighborhood, not, not leading, overseeing the neighborhood planning process in coordination with neighborhoods. I, I was actually, I was just texting with Maya to make sure that she was aware, um, of the conversation being had here this evening. And, um, she said, you know, she's had another community meeting this evening, if she weren't, she would have been here herself as well. But we will continue working closely with, um, Maya and Curtis as well in the Project Connect area.
Absolutely, Maya is actually in the 10th ward at the Delmar Divine for the SLDC Town Hall meeting. It's just why I was juggling both of those tonight. So thank you, uh, thank you for that. Uh, I'm still, I want to listen to further to the comments and questions. A lot of my questions about you all's piece were again thoroughly answered in your presentation. But again, my concern comes in with the testimonies from the, uh, constituents, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Commissioner Boaz, any questions?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, um, and I'm sorry, Miriam, you probably said this already, but do we need to approve this tonight in the same way that we need to approve the other to allow the, um, application to move forward? Or could this be put on hold to have better neighborhood engagement? And, and I asked that question fully knowing that we, we meant to be further along, you know, through this SLDC process in the, the neighborhood engagement by now. And I also appreciate the professionalism of, of the staff in coming to us with these changes, you know, in anticipation rather than act, acting after the fact, as you described earlier. But, but do we need to act this quickly?
Well, I mean, they all, they, you know, I'll never say the planning commission needs to do anything, I'm bringing kind of my best recommendations and advice. Part of the reason we brought it to the commission this evening with the hope that there would be an action is so it could progress through the legislative process at the Board, Board of Aldermen prior to the FTA's initial consideration of the project, which will begin in August. And I'm not an expert on the legislative calendar. Um, if anybody in the room has a sense of whether, um, kind of giving this some more time would still preserve time and opportunity for conversation, would still preserve the possibility of this being enacted prior to the FTA's evaluation of this project. Um, I, unfortunately, I don't have that answer. And also, the legislative process itself can be, um, un, unpredictable, I mean, like, like any process, so that's probably not a very clarifying or satisfying answer. But if, if anybody else, uh, has anything to add, uh, to that timing question, please go ahead.
Yeah, please. Yes.
Hi Tracy, this is, ah, now I know what Earl was dealing with, um, this is Grace, um, in the room. So in terms of answering your question, yes, this can wait till the May Planning Commission to see if this, if it were approved and recommended by the Planning Commission in May, it would then be sent to the Board of Aldermen. It would be a very tight timeline in terms of seeing this pass before the board goes out for summer break. Uh, but I am looking at Scott to see if the weeks also add up in his brain in that way. But I think it's a yes, but would appreciate Scott's confirmation that, um, he also agrees with that.
I mean, I, I think it's a little hard to speculate, it, it's hard to know exactly the timeline that would proceed at, at the Board of Aldermen. A little more time is probably beneficial for the legislative process, and I think we would also note that that too is a public process and also a process that allows for input. Not to belabor this, but, you know, I think as a staff recommendation, our sense was given, you know, the, the multiple years of assessments, um, that have happened in the past, the relatively supportive nature of the neighborhood plans, relatively modest nature of these recommendations. And the fact that they are very much actually in alignment with today's built environment that was largely built before the zoning code that we have today came into place. I think we brought this at a time that we thought it was ripe to be considered by, um, planning commission. So, um, obviously, it's commissioner's decision, it'll probably put a little, probably make things a little harder if we wait till May, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I know it's not my turn, I would just add that, um, to Scott's comments that, yes, that will make things more difficult if this goes to May, um, but also want to be mindful and respectful to the information folks are getting and what we need to do on our end to ensure that information is shared with everyone in a way that folks feel comfortable also. Um, I would love to see this happen today, but again, I am also respectful of what folks are taking in tonight.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Boaz, any additional questions?
Nope, that's it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Bradley?
I would just like to thank the staff for the very detailed presentation. Uh, Miriam, you did yeoman's work, breaking that down and explaining it, um, in a way that I think is very palatable for everybody to understand. I also do want to thank the public for staying around for this relatively long meeting to, um, state their comments. I, I hear you, I understand what you're saying, um, loud and clear. Uh, so thank you for your time and for bringing those, uh, concerns to the planning commission, that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Cremendia?
Thank you, um, and I, I just want to echo, you know, taking notes during public comment. Heard the concerns about impacts of sound, uh, street and, uh, demolition-ish concerns. And I think all these would be addressed through the planning process that's still to come. Um, and, but I think what is unclear, since I'm not familiar with the JBL plan, um, you know, how this is, in how this compares and what the changes, well, moderate overall, how those would impact specifically or conflict with that plan. So that's something I'm questioning and, uh, recognition that, yes, there's going to be further public hearings. Um, if this were to pass today, there'd be further public hearings at the Board of Aldermen in the HUD's committee. Um, and, uh, I know that I personally checked in with alderpersons on that, whose wards would be impacted by these changes. And I know that, uh, there was efforts to reach out to the alderpersons, all the alderpersons along this route, um, in advance of this meeting. So that is the other avenue that we're, you know, uh, that we have easier access to. Um, versus managing the active email addresses for all of the neighborhood associations or community organizations. So, um, and so I also want to encourage, uh, all those folks from JBL to, uh, communicate with Alderwoman Laura Keys. Um, because she'll, she'll be a necessary, uh, supporter of this or proponent of additional, you know, additional role for JBL. Um, some of the other questions, um, I had about this proposed zoning, um, very early in your slide deck, you said minimum standard moderate. Um, would you say, Miriam, that we're in moderate as we are? And with these changes, would we be moving further up, or do we have any sense of how these moderate changes would impact our score for the FTA?
That was good, what I was gonna ask, you're talking about the FTA score. Um, the FTA score is really extremely multifaceted.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think that if you, the, the big picture, if you look at this project according to the FTA criteria, it could use a little help, quite frankly, right? So every local action that can be taken, um, can support that. And I also think that a big narrative component of the project to the FTA, because the FTA pro, the FTA scoring is a little biased towards the coasts, I would say, towards where you've got more housing density. So part of this project's narrative, um, thrust with the FTA is going to be that the FTA needs to be investing in disinvested right? It needs to be bringing those federal dollars to places that, um, that can benefit and that can like build a more economically vibrant future. And so, but the FTA also wants to see a best effort from local agencies to get their local policies in a transit-supportive way, because they do have lots of projects they can fund across the country. And where they're building projects, they want to see, they want to see ridership, right? They want to see those dollars benefiting residents in those communities, so, um, I think it is important for this project to take steps in advance of this fall rating, initial rating from the FTA to say, we as a community are moving in the right direction. Um, and we are sort of marshaling our resources around this project. Not just the things we're talking about today, but there's a bunch of those buckets where, you know, policy can be, um, I think oriented towards being more transit-supportive or providing more I think oriented towards being more transit supportive or providing more direct investment into the corridor. So that was kind of a long answer, but does it, does it matter? If you ask me, does it matter? It does matter. And I think that's why we, that's why we tried to craft a recommendation that was meaningful, yet also viable, is how I would phrase it.
Okay. Yeah. Um, yeah, but obviously it'll take work to pass this at the board, even if it's moderate and limited to just this form through the city. And so I think it's balancing, like, there is appetite at the leadership of the Board of Aldermen to be more you know, to have to lower parking minimums citywide. So, you know, so if some of the, so there's appetite to do more now. And so if it's like as much work, we do more with the same effort. Anyway, so that's one of my like, you know, loading questions, no answers required. And the other question I had is, does the FTA, will they be looking at whether these zoning changes have been made to other lines, connecting lines? And if that talked about or considered at all, you know?
Yeah. So there, there is a deeply technical answer to that question. And that is that the FTA primarily does not assess the network. They assess each new project segment individually. So in this case, just the green line. Additionally, I would say that there actually are a lot of sort of transit supportive development regulations in the city around other station areas, although they are not all zoning related. Some of them are like Chapter 353, you know, development protocol. But steps have been taken in a lot of other station areas. This, so to get back to your initial question, we don't have to do a zoning action in those other existing station areas to get some credit from the FTA.
And my next question is, Miriam, you did, yes, a ton of work trying to talk through all these changes. And I think one of the key questions that I have is what ward or neighborhoods would see the biggest change with this moderate? So some of the yellows, they're a little similar. So and I have a little bit of a small map in front of me. So it's especially, let's take JVL as an example. What is their zoning now? And basically, what areas along the line would this zoning amendment change most? Or, yeah, in terms of like, what's permanent?
Really good question. I think it would not, I mean, as kind of proposed here, it would not do anything to change areas that are zoned A. But when you look at the zoning map, so it's on page four of the resolution and then maybe Dylan, if it's easy enough to kind of look back to, oh, actually, just the map, which is probably a distance back. But I don't know if there's a neighborhood that would kind of experience more rather than fewer changes. I wish I had included a neighborhood map in this presentation.
The zoning, that would be nice.
Because honestly, looking at this map, I think some of the greater changes would be in areas outside of the central corridor because those central corridors zoning regulations outside of the J and K are already very transit supportive. We're not proposing major changes there. Neighborhoods that have kind of more pockets of industrial, I think less changes there because the only proposal relating to J and K is the parking reduction and only for certain uses. And so when you look at this, I, I think it's sort of equal parts north and south neighborhoods and
and B, the family, the bright yellow?
Yep, the bright yellow and the, that we kind of get into the tans. And I mean, this, the colors aren't very differentiated here on this screen. But the, the largest area of A, I believe, is directly north of the NGA site. So no proposed changes to the A district. But all other residential districts and mixed use districts would be kind of allowing of a little bit more housing density, but not more height in the residential districts. And a little bit less parking. And I, I want to, and I know this is probably not lost on planning commissioners, but I think the point Scott made a few minutes ago that most of our city was built before the zoning code was in place. And so the zoning regulations don't really have a super, you know, it's not a one-to-one matchup with the, the actual character of our built environment. And I, I mean, my honest assessment here, and this is part of the reason we recommended these changes is that these would allow for development that is more consistent with kind of the, the city we know and its historic neighborhoods. Often, when people want to develop the types of things that are kind of consistent with our historic neighborhoods, they may need variance. And that's what we're trying to prevent, especially in this corridor, so that we can see a relatively kind of quicker migration toward transit supportive uses and quality infill.
I think one of the points made by the, our constituents, yeah, and JVL is right now, JVL looks like it's zoned multifamily. Like, it's not single family zoning. So it does have a lot of single family homes there relatively. And one of the hopeful outcomes of having a transit line is denser development. So there would be in the best, in our like best case scenario, there is, there, there would be development pressures on that neighborhood that's seen counter to those that we heard today, what they would want. Because our current zoning, even if we change nothing with the zoning, it would not like prevent that from happening right now. So I, I do want to like name, like their concerns are valid. It's not related to the zoning change. It's almost, it's, it would be, even if we didn't make the zoning change, those pressures would still exist with just the route alignment. But I do think it does seem like the ends of the line are the most where the most change would happen, even in this moderate situation. So that's Ward 11, 14 and 3.
Another quick thought I just want to add is the proposal here makes no changes in allowed use. So any area where multiple family is not currently allowed, this, this would do nothing to change that. And areas that are already zoned E or C or D, well, okay, C or D allow multifamily. That wouldn't change. They also allow single family. That wouldn't change. And in B, multifamily is allowed only in certain circumstances. Those circumstances wouldn't change.
And I think another thing to note for when we have that engagement with JVL more is we do have some precedent here for how adding light rail impacts communities of color. Because we can see the before and after for the stations that were added in, whilst in Page Dell. And how it did or did not, you know, lead to massive displacement or change, which, you know, so I think that's an important point to talk about in the future engagement on this. And as someone who's lived in a city where we had more light rail, I lived in Boston, I lived along a light rail line. Yeah, red line. I lived on the red line. And I know that was kind of a seriousness, like I had a wonderful experience living on a light rail line. And it, I used it every day. And I wish this, this route reached to me where I live now, so I could use it to get to work. So, you know, some of the concerns that we heard about quality of life changes with sound and noise and construction. I don't, they don't like hit me. But we do have precedent to look at in St. Louis about, you know, that transition period and the before and after. And I hope we can have more conversations about that for sure. And I think, so yeah, that was my last comment. It's just like the previous, how previous lines have impacted neighborhoods. So we can bring that to these meetings that need to happen. I'll pause there.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one small comment in that the, the concerns about noise and sound, I think everybody related to the project has, has definitely heard. The project team on the H and TB side is finding the most similar contexts for light rail projects across the country to get some really, you know, to get video of what those places look and sound like. And I think when we're all kind of looking at the same thing, I think that will really help the dialogue happen about, you know, what is it like in these historic neighborhoods in this context of, you know, like not high rises, right? Smaller, single family, smaller multifamily homes. And so I'm really looking forward to having that material available. And I think the project team as well, so that, to move that discussion along. So definitely, I think thinking about how to talk about some of the concerns that are being raised is, is very much underway.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Keung?
No, thank you all. I do have thoughts, not to keep us here, but I appreciate that we're all still here talking about it because this project is important in doing it well with people's input and ensuring all input is heard is important to the process. And so just thank you, Ms. Carla, because I can, I, she might still be on, or she off now. But if she's still on, thank you for being here, listening to us tonight, talk about this as well. And I did want to note, because I was able to join a few of the different meetings that have occurred, including the one that Mr. Talby Roach joined with JVL and Maya was a part of that, as well as I think Curtis may have joined for a part of that meeting too. And so I know Maya did reach out to Ms. Carla and the Neighborhood Association to see if they could have a further follow-up conversation. So I will also follow up with Maya to make sure that those conversations are moving forward and that we make sure that we schedule that. In terms of meeting with alderpeople along the line, I think Commissioner Garmendia bringing that up is important as well. The mayor's office has been meeting with folks around this TOD tax amendment change. And we have met with Alderwoman Keys as well as Alderman Aldridge around this area as well. And they have been speaking positively about the TOD tax amendment change. They're interested in learning more and seeing how this will impact their neighborhoods. So we will continue to work with them and engage them as well on that. But Miriam, I wanted to also acknowledge the work that you all have done around the webinars and particularly the survey that you guys have. Is it, can you highlight some of the feedback we're getting? While JVL's voice is very important to this process, I all, do want to uplift the letters of support and the Google survey feedback we've gone so far.
Yeah. And I ended up presenting the comments in a kind of very summarized form here, kind of specific to the issues, but shared the full kind of written comment with the commission. And that included two formal letters of support from Bi-State, both Mr. Talby Roach and John Langa, who's involved in economic development and has been working on transit-oriented development issues throughout the region. We also received a formal letter of support from Citizens for Modern Transit and from Aaron Burnett, who is an affordable housing developer who also and I, I'm just hoping I didn't mistake his name, but an affordable housing developer who also is a city resident. And I think he may have mentioned he lives in or near this corridor. I'm not sure. So those were the formal letters of support, but we also had a survey with responses that kind of, when people had notes or suggested changes to the proposal, it was to go further than what we've recommended. People wanted to either drop parking requirements altogether or establish a parking maximum, make that change citywide as soon as possible. And I, I mean, I, I do think that that is an item I 100% expect will be taken up within the zoning code update. If, if there isn't a kind of a nearer term question there. Others wanted us to go higher, you know, six stories, seven stories in the height increase. But again, since this is a flat text amendment across that half mile radius, I I I, I think that is the type of character change that could be could easily depart from the historic character in a neighborhood like JVL. And until there is an updated neighborhood plan that requests that type of guidance, I I wouldn't be comfortable with a much greater additional height myself, but of course, it's the commission's consideration. And again, with the form-based code, we'll have the opportunity to dial that in a little bit more and in concert with neighborhood plans. And no direct comments on housing density other than the suggestion that we might include A. So I, in summary, people were supportive of the effort to move things in a transit supportive direction, but we're wanting this initial proposal to go further than we're recommending. Again, I, we didn't provide the general public this full context of like, hey, we're also planning to do a form-based district here in the near term. So people weren't responding with the benefit of that knowledge. But that, that's how I would characterize the input we received.
Yeah. Thanks, Miriam, for highlighting them too. And then I do want to just get your thoughts as well. Because some of the feedback we heard from the JVL residents is not losing some of the single family homes and not having it be overly densified with tall buildings. But in terms of the current proposed zoning tax amendment changes, do you think things like reducing the minimum lot size would actually help with developing affordable single family homes?
It would. Yeah, it would allow for, well, really, it, it would allow for more lots to have housing development without a variance or for lots to be. And if, yeah, Mary, feel free to jump in anytime, but it would allow for housing types, the development of housing types that tend to be more affordable or attainable, whether for sale or rental. But it wouldn't, again, the height recommendations are not for any of the residential districts at this time, only for the commercial districts, F and G, and those are kind of on some commercial corridors.
Thanks. I know how much work PD's put into this. Thanks. I know how much work PDA has put into this, but and we know that Bi-State's been leading that effort by recognizing the contributions of your team and everything you guys are doing. So thank you. That's it for me.
And also, um, I know I keep kind of saying Mary's name, but zoning administrator, Mary Hart Burton was very much a, a big part of the team, helping us make sure that kind of this recommendation would sit down into the code correctly and and sharing a lot of information about her experience with variances at the board of adjustment. And I just want to acknowledge Mary's contributions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
No comment.
Oh.
Think you've covered it.
All right. Just one clarification, we have been through a lot this evening. Appreciate everyone's questions and contributions. In terms of the engagement, um, you gave a little snippet of sort of what that feedback was, but in terms of, and I don't expect you to have exact numbers, but in terms of numbers of engagement and residents and their locations, would you say you've gotten dozens, hundreds, 10? In terms of people that have attended webinars, gone to public meetings, taken the survey? What, what have the numbers been looking like so far?
Uh, I can share the survey itself had 24 responses. Some didn't include comment. Some were just like, hey, include me in future circulation and information about the project. The webinar we had, I want to say 15, but don't quote me on that. I don't know how many people have since watched it on YouTube. I haven't checked those numbers, but it is available and will continue to be available as a resource. If this is recommended to the, um, for the board of aldermen to consider. At neighborhood meetings, let's see, in the project connect footprint, I didn't do a count. Do you have a? Uh, yeah, I would say at least 30, but probably not 50. In the near south community meeting last night, a little bit of a smaller crowd, maybe 20, maybe.
And Lorna did her.
Yeah, yeah. Team working with Bi-State on the project in general had an overview of the project and the upcoming engagement with kind of neighborhood and community leaders broadly defined and and I kind of blanking on a number fewer than 20, but more than 10 and in the emails I sent out, I mean, there's probably 50 groups on that list. That was a significant kind of, and everybody BCC'd, um, because I didn't want to start a reply all frenzy.
Also say for the one phase that this Miriam's talking about what we're doing or can change in the zoning. But prior to the current consultant that's working at State that was here last month, AECOM was under contract and doing work in the, along the right away, along the thoughts of the right of way, conducting engagement. Grace and I were at one that they conducted. That was at that doorways on Jefferson. That alignment type.
Great.
Another thing I'd add about that kind of historical context of TOD work. Some of the feedback we've received is like, hey, hey, this is great. Why haven't we done this already? Um, and part of the answer there is, well, it, it benefits from being more certain about where the alignment is before you put in a place specific thing. But just that was another point. It's like, hey, we've, we've known what policies support transit oriented development and transit. Kind of why now rather than before? And so that just kind of sharing that is another point of input.
Great. Thank you. And I'll just end with a comment that it seems to me that this is really the first step in what is going to be a very long process and a, a process that will include multiple opportunities to tweak even what we see here. You know, I'm sure we'll get comments back from FTA that may say, you know, do this, do this, do that, whatever. In addition to the neighborhood planning efforts, which will, I'm sure be much more thorough and have the opportunity to individually tailor some of these changes to fit specific neighborhoods. So I think, you know, while this may seem um, like a big step to some community members, I think there will be opportunity in the, in the future to really make sure it does fit the communities and, and addresses many of those concerns. So.
I know I said I had no comment, but I feel like I should at least, and I don't know what I noted.
Okay.
Uh, so I tried to record what I heard from public comment. Um, so I heard concerns with sound, um, concerns with home value depreciation, uh, concerns with new parking, concerns with existing occupied homes being torn up. I heard a desire for assistance to build up their community. I heard a desire for protection of the historic nature of their community. And really the most striking one to me is that I heard that this is contrary to the community driven plan that was in place with SLDC for the project connect footprint specifically. No white rail being, uh, planned between Parnell and Grand on that bridge and no metro in single family residential areas. I do believe that you all have the ability to respond to all of those things. With good, helpful information, uh, to clarify this process. And I hope that those clarifications can get to the community members, um, sooner than later. And I think they will be pleased with your clarifications.
I, I just didn't want to leave out another really important, um, maybe not point of comment, but a question that we received during the webinar, which is a concern about, uh, kind of the opposite of depreciation, like what if property values rise? Cause that is maybe the result we would most frequently expect from a major infrastructure investment. And what are the policies that are in place to protect against that? And, um, I think number one, I'll flag that that is a question we should continue to ask ourselves as a city throughout the corridor. But there are a couple of assets, which is a researcher on our team today confirmed that there are over just over 3,000 dedicated affordable units in the corridor, either existing or under development. That is an asset. And also in the JBL area, the speakers mentioned the redevelopment plan that was recently put in place in partnership with SLDC and the Board of Aldermen, this, that same redevelopment plan came through the planning commission. Yeah, the legal services of Eastern Missouri helps to draft and shepherd that plan. That contains what I would describe as some sort of anti-displacement measures, which kind of grant residents access to homeowners, access to tax abatement in that area. And so I think that is another asset on the kind of mitigating displacement pressures side of things. But just your, your note about depreciation sparked that, um, I think really important point of comment that we received from the community in our engagement.
And all those as you, as you're listening.
Can Don come to the mic, please?
Oh yeah, sure. So I think, uh, the, the list of things you started with will all have a, a people and human place based to them. Uh, at the end there, you mentioned something about the alignment. I think changing the alignment particularly big lift at this point, it would be a particularly big. But having resources and thoughts spent on all those other things certainly are part of what's the future.
Well, also note too, that the that particular concern with the alignment is a component of the alignment that has existed through several iterations of the plan. The reason I say it's striking because I, I guess I was concerned that it wasn't shared with them. But you know.
16 months with a
Right.
Uh, I, I do want to make another note, like President's Office of the Board of Aldermen is definitely, we're already looking at and adding, you know, what are other things we can do to prevent displacement with investments, not just with this proposed green line, but also with the Belt Line and just other large investments that are happening in the city. What did I say?
But, but line.
Yeah. And things we've seen happen in other cities like Atlanta's Belt Line. So, uh, very much, uh, we're very interested in preserving our existing community and residents, especially in the north side. So that's something we'll, this outside the scope of what we're being asked to do today, but something that the Board of Aldermen will definitely be working on in the years to now and in the years to come before it's too late.
Great. Thank you. With that, we are over three hours, so I'm going to push us towards a vote. So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Actually, we go back. Could we, could we hear, could we hear the staff recommendation, please? Sorry.
Yeah. Um, I mean, the, the staff recommendation is to, um, recommend these proposed changes to the Board of Aldermen for their consideration in the legislative process.
I will go and say so moved.
Enjoy your second. It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Keong, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Uh, roll call vote, please. Alderweb and Hubbard.
Hi.
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 Hi. Hi. Great. Thank you, everyone. With that, I will pass it to Don for any last minute comments.
So we're going to do a three minute drill. And delegated items. Have a delegated item. Scott's going to speak about it for just a second. In that it's lady to an alley on the map.
We finally get to the real headline. Tonight's, tonight's meeting. Uh, this is not on the screen, but it is in, um, your planning commission packet. Is a delegated item, an alley vacation in the Forest Park Southeast neighborhood. This is a north, south alley. It's between Arco and Oakland. This would potentially or in support potentially of a adjacent development. We're just going to note that, um, this recommended street vacation does have a condition and that is that they, they stub out that alley with the new north, south, uh, end. So it doesn't dead end. So the east, the adjacent, east, west alley doesn't dead end. Uh, I think that's the main point. Okay. Thank you.
Which leads me to an observation. You just saw how incredibly broad terms of level of things that is on Scott's plate. Down to uh, 40 feet of alley to the whole system. He's also the project manager for the city's mobility study. Go about that. Second, like Grace, just to, just give a quick heads up about visitors we had in this room for a week last week. And then we'll get to that one. Then we'll get to that.
I'll make it real quick. I'm not going to go up there, Don, but we had folks from three German cities, Munich, Berlin and Frankfurt, as well as Seattle, Atlanta. Come to St. Louis last week. We're participating in what's called a transatlantic exchange, learning exchange program focused around urban development and housing. They got to meet a lot of the PDA staff as well as SLDC staff and uh, hear about the work we're doing here in St. Louis. And the takeaway was you guys have a lot of challenges. It's worse than we thought, but you have a lot of really good, excited people who are trying to improve the city. And that went from city staff to residents they got to meet. So they're excited to see what St. Louis will become. Many of them have never been to the Midwest, so they were surprised by how nice the Midwest is. And they were like, so should we just plan another trip in 10 years to see all of the changes and good work you guys have done? And I said, yeah, 10 years is definitely more than enough time to come back.
And the third item, I'll relate to this picture. This is the national planning conference was yesterday. Uh, we have two staff member there, Jonathan and Alexa. It's a fantastic learning opportunity. One of the things that they'll be tasked with is this virtual meeting, uh, that comes in May from it. And we'll take sessions from what we participated at, uh, to show to our staff and bring other departments in to see some of the best practices. Zoning, zoning, zoning was a big topic. Design equity was a big topic. Those are all great. This picture is taken, uh, two nights ago. Two days ago. With, with three members there. Some guy that's been around the American Planning Association for a long time, standing in the middle. Been quite involved. The woman on the right is the elected president of the American Planning Association, Angela Brooks. And the gentleman on the left closed, she did the opening on last Friday. The gentleman on the left of the picture is, did the closing ceremony. Anybody want to take a guess as to if you know who he was? As I give hints, his group was Arrested Development. So he is speech Todd Thomas from Arrested Development and he closed us out and it was terrific. He was talking about the five attributes that make for good management and grow and boosting. Old life in that regard, with a mention and a shout out that his mother was born in East Saint. Great time, which leads me to one last final point is as we heard tonight, staff works incredibly hard. They're incredibly talented. And to give you a little perspective, have part of Scott's staff, 100% of Scott's staff is represented in this. 50% of Miriam's currently occupied staff is represented in this room. So the talent is phenomenal. The abilities are phenomenal, but there's only so much we can do with time and resources. With that, in 20 minutes and nine.
Are you done? That I will hear a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening.